Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Charlottesville City School Board meeting. Today is August 5th, 2021. I would like to call this meeting to order. And now if you will please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And now we'll ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Now I would like roll call of board members. Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger.
Present.
Dr. Kraft.
Present.
Ms. McKeever.
Here.
Ms. Perry.
Present.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the agenda next, we're going to, I'm gonna go through some announcements for our community. Just wanted to bring to everybody's attention. I'm sorry, I didn't know if you wanted to pull, do we have the slides, the announcements? I move the approval of the agenda.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote for approval of the agenda. Or, I'm sorry. First time we're back in the media center. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. You good? Okay, thank you. Alright, so now we do have a few announcements we just wanted to bring to everybody's attention. This has been on social media, and I believe it was put out in the newsletter. So we do have family engagement with several in or out in the community meetings. Meeting with people, and they're listed here. We already had August 3rd meeting. This coming Saturday, we do have August 7th from 10:30 to 12:30 at West Haven Community Health Fair Day. Monday, August 9th at Hearthwood at the Back to School Event from 4:30 to 6:30. Wednesday, August 11th from 5:30 to 7:30 PM at Friendship Court. And Saturday, August 21st, 10:30 to 12 at the Back to School Bash, which will be at Ting Pavilion Downtown. We also, we'll speak more to this later, but I do want to update everybody about some hiring events regarding school bus drivers. So we have upcoming job fair opportunities, August 7th at Charlottesville High School from 10:00 AM to 12. August 14th at the high school here from 10 to 12 again. And August 21st there at Ting Pavilion at the Back to School Bash. So we do have that listed on our website. And again, we'll be getting an update on transportation later in the meeting. We also wanted to announce some of our open house schedules. I'm not sure if you heard all of these. But we do have the elementary school meet and greet appointments. We have middle and high school open houses, Monday, August 23rd. And then a reminder to everybody that we have our first day of school, Wednesday, August 25th. And now we are going to move into our first opportunity for comments from members of the community. I want to remind everybody that you have three minutes for your comment. If you will please state your name and address. And I believe, do we have our timer? I know that we did have some people that were signed up.
Yep, I can ask people if they would like to participate. Do you want to do virtual first? From?
Yes.
Okay, so if we have any virtual participants that are here and they would like to speak at this time, they can simply raise their hand or message me in the chat. And we'll have that three minute time to speak. There are no hands up at this time. Just quite yet.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cuomo, did you say there's nobody?
There's, no hands are raised at this time in the virtual participant list.
Okay, and we do have another opportunity towards the end of the meeting. If anybody is interested in making a public comment. If, we do have some people in the media center here, probably for other reasons. But if anybody would like to come up for public comment, you're welcome to do so right now. Okay, we will move on then, thank you. And next, I'm going to entertain a motion for adoption of the consent agenda, please.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Any questions or discussion from anybody? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I believe we are going to now move to items for discussion. And I believe, Dr. Baptist, if you want to introduce our first guest, please, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Henderson. We invited Dr. Denise Bonds earlier this summer to come join us to talk about the status of what's going on with COVID in our community, and things have changed a little bit since we offered that invitation. So at this point, I'd like to invite the medical director of the Blue Ridge Health District, Dr. Denise Bonds, I want to thank her personally for all the work that her staff has done with Charlottesville City Schools. I'm in first例 cases with most of her staff, and I'm sure they hate to see my name come up on caller ID, but they're always there for me. And I thank you so much.
So, good evening. As Beth introduced, I'm Denise Bonds. I'm the local health director. I'm gonna give you a brief update of where we are at today. And some of the, not really it's changed, but I have some updates even from this afternoon. So here is a graph of all of our COVID cases in the Charlottesville area from the very beginning. Think back. From March 2020 till now. You can see that starting in, thank, and the bank, and the bank. Our cases had really tailed off to almost zero at that point. A nearly flat line in the city of Charlottesville. And you can see that beginning about July 1, we began to have a worrisome decrease in the number of cases. That is very similar to what we're seeing across the state and really across the nation. So what has changed? It is the Delta variant that we all know and love so much right now. So if you look at this graph, this is the various variants that have been typed in the state of Virginia by week of onset, dating back to the beginning of December, when really that effort started. And you can see that for the longest time, it was primarily the Alpha variant. But really, at beginning of July, it began to switch. And it's that darker color, which is the Delta variant. So just so everyone understands, both here and out in the audience, every time a virus replicates, it's an opportunity for its instructions, which we call RNA or DNA, depending on what type of bug it is, to get a little scrambled. So if you think about the game of telephone that you used to play when you were a kid, you whisper something to the person next to it, and they understand it. But by the time it goes all the way around in a circle, it's a completely garbled because mistakes happen. And that's kind of the same thing happening here. The more opportunities, more opportunities there are for a mistake to happen. And sometimes they become a Delta variant. So we just got lucky here. So why do we care about the Delta variant? Well, because of what happened July 4th in Provincetown. So Provincetown is a lovely community out on the little tip of Massachusetts. If you haven't been out to the Cape Fair, it's lovely. They had a big celebration. Massachusetts has very high vaccination rates, so not completely inappropriate. Many indoor type of activities. And shortly after that, the health departments in that area and the surrounding communities of Massachusetts began to see pretty high numbers. And through their case investigation, all traced them back either directly or indirectly to these Fourth of July celebrations. And ultimately, what they ended up, you can't see it because it's got my picture in over the top of it, but about 470 infections, thank you, of people were traced back to that. And of the 469 cases, 74% of those individuals actually had been vaccinated. So they would have been considered breakthrough cases. And of that 74% that were vaccinated, 79% were symptomatic. So two really unusual things in comparison to previously. Previously, not very many people who'd been vaccinated were actually becoming infected. And if you got infected, you really weren't very symptomatic. You maybe had a little bit of a bad cold type of scenario, but many people didn't know they had it at all. Fortunately, the vaccines still work because there were only four people out of all of that who had to be hospitalized. And that's really a testament to how successful these vaccines are. They didn't necessarily keep you from getting infected, but they kept you out of the hospital, and people didn't die. And I think that's a huge success story for these vaccines. The reason the CDC has really come down in the last week or so with the recommendation that we all resume wearing our masks, and that schools go back to universal mask wearing, is because of the graph on the right-hand side of the screen. And that is a graph that essentially looks at how much virus you are extruding if you are infected. And the bar on the left is if you are unvaccinated or not fully vaccinated. And the bar on the right is what happened to people in this outbreak that were vaccinated. And you can see they are about the same. And what that means is previously, when they did tests with other variants, people who were vaccinated not only didn't have a lot of symptoms, they weren't actually excreting a lot of viral particles. They weren't very infectious, as we like to say. And so it was kind of a dead end for the virus. If you infected someone who was vaccinated, you didn't get much of a response, and it didn't go anywhere. It just sort of died out at that point in time. Deltas figured out a way to actually continue to replicate in people who are vaccinated. And so that makes them very infectious. And again, if you're vaccinated, it's probably okay because it worked, right? It kept people out of the hospital, and they didn't die. However, if you are unvaccinated, or you are a medically fragile or immunocompromised person, this could be a big problem for you. Because if you're immunocompromised, you don't mount the same response than a non-immunocompromised individual does. So this is why we are really pretty excited about what's going on right now. Because this is a little bit of a change from what we had previously. And it is why now, when I go to the grocery store, I once again wear my mask. Because I could be infected with the Delta, and I don't want to give that to somebody else. I don't want to pick it up either, but mostly it's protecting the other people I'm interacting with. So the Delta variant, as I said, is highly infectious. So here on the left-hand side of the screen is what would happen if you were the original COVID virus. You might infect one or two other people. With the Delta variant, we know that it's capable, if I'm infected with Delta, I could in fact infect most of the board here if I got close enough without a mask and coughed on you. So you can see, that's going to spread much faster and much quicker. And that's another reason. So now we have immunized people who can spread the virus, and they spread it to so many more people than originally did. So it's really got us quite worried about what's happening and why we really are trying to encourage mitigation measures. So what is the best mitigation measure? Get vaccinated. And that's what happened this afternoon. The governor announced that all state employees had to show proof of vaccine by September 1, and that included contractors, or they had to get tested every week. So that means that all the people in the health department, all of the other state employees are going to have to really get vaccinated. And that's a large proportion of the working population of this state. There's a lot of people who work for the state. And if you add that into other companies, and the federal government, and the VA, we're talking about a lot of people who really do have to get vaccinated now. And that's a good thing. Vaccines are safe, and they are very effective. So more people are vaccinated, lower risk for community transmission, less likely that we're gonna have a different variant that's even worse than Delta arise. So the solution is get vaccinated. So how are we doing with vaccination here in Charlottesville? Well, you can see that about 60% of the total population has at least one dose. So they have at least some partial immunity. If you just look at adults, it's 67%. That's because we can't vaccinate kids that are under the age of 12 right now. So there's just a proportion of the population that are ineligible. If you look at the number of people who are fully vaccinated, it's 54%. For adults, it's 61.5%. So Charlottesville is doing pretty well overall with regard to vaccination. But if you look at the census map, where lighter colors mean less vaccination, there are definitely pockets and neighborhoods that have not really achieved a high vaccination rate. When we look at age groups, so the percent vaccinated by age group, the Charlottesville age group data is on the left-hand side of your screen. Our cases are on the right-hand side of the screen by the same age group. The case death group, I'm giving by the entire district, just for convenience sake, because it's the easiest data for me to get, but also because some age groups have smaller number of cases when you get down to a locality. But the same applies whether you were looking at Charlottesville or the whole district. And you can see that for the city, the group that has the lowest vaccination rate is actually the young adults, the 20 to 29. And anecdotally, what I hear from our outreach workers is that they're really reluctant. They just don't understand the need to get a vaccine. And it's not just the COVID vaccine. We know that there are other things, other preventive healthcare measures, that when you're 20, you just don't think about, and you're just not, you just don't embrace as well. So that's a group. No surprise, it's also the group where we see the highest number of cases. Because they're out in crowded situations, doing things that probably are slightly riskier, and they're not vaccinated. And so that's where we see lots of cases. So we're doing lots of outreach to those groups. Certainly, if you have a family member in that age group, please encourage them to get vaccinated. And you can see, we have a small number of cases in that 0 to 9 age group. That's an age group not eligible for vaccine, obviously. And we'll, as school starts back up, watch that very closely. The good news, I think, for you all is the 10 to 19-year-old that includes that eligible youth group for vaccine, actually here in Charlottesville, is pretty high, 63%. And that's great. I think that that's a real testament to the work that's been done on the school, by the school, on the children's behalf to get and encourage vaccines. And one of the things that we'll be doing is coming back to all of the high schools to help do additional vaccination when school starts for those kids that didn't take advantage of it over the summer or the last time we were here. So. So what else can you do? Well, the other great minute, there are several mitigation strategies, but the one that I think is getting the most play right now is wearing a mask. And it's really important, particularly in the school setting, that students, faculty, and staff wear a mask while they're at school. And in fact, that was the other thing that came out of the governor's press conference, was a reminder of the law that was passed in March that said, kids need to be in school, and schools need to follow the published mitigation guidance from the CDC. I'm happy to send that reference around because I don't think he really referenced which law it was, and I had to do a little sleuthing. But I'll get that to you, Beth, and then you can, to share it with the group. I think that's actually really helpful for schools because it provides the legal framework that you can fall under for the decision to have faculty, students, and staff wear a mask while in school. You know, if you think about it, it's really important for our elementary school kids because they're just not eligible for a vaccine yet, right? They just aren't, and they're likely going to be in spaces where sometimes they're pretty close to each other because that's just what little kids do. They just want to be and interact with everybody. I think it's also important for our high school and middle school because there are still some individuals who have not been vaccinated. And of course, we want everyone to be vaccinated because that's the way out. But also, there are going to be individuals who either can't or have a compromised immune system so that even if they got vaccinated, they're still at pretty high risk. You can see some other recommendations that we've put out in the Blue Ridge. Certainly, if you're unvaccinated or ineligible, you should wear a mask when you're indoors. If you're vulnerable and vaccinated, you should wear a mask. Or if you're an individual who cares for a vulnerable or unvaccinated individual, you should. And of course, we should just be really comfortable with anybody wearing a mask in an indoor setting if that's what makes them feel safe. There's nothing wrong, there's nothing illegal with wearing a mask to protect your health. We are vaccinating in lots of places. So if you have not been vaccinated, or you have a friend or a family member who's interested, we're at the health department now every Friday. You can walk in, we're just over on Rose Hill Drive. It's walking distance nearly from here, and we will be happy to vaccinate you. Community pharmacies, both the big chain pharmacies, but many of the local pharmacies are doing vaccines. And you can go to vaccines.gov, and that will put your zip code in, and it'll give you all the places in your area that have vaccines. And I believe UVA is doing vaccines, but they are no longer doing it Seminole Square. So I apologize for that error. Actually, we are doing it at Fashion Square Mall in the old J. Crew Store. We have evening hours, if that's more convenient for people who work during the day. And if you go to our website, you can find all of the hours. So again, vaccines.gov is really your go-to place for finding out where to go and get a vaccine. If you're over the age of 18, you can just drop in. If you're a youth, you need to either have, you need to have a responsible adult with you who can give consent to get vaccinated. We also have homebound vaccinations. So if you can't easily get out of the house, we'll come to you and do your vaccine. We have a mobile unit that does vaccination. Mobi is the unit that you see there. We'll be on the mall every Monday during the day. If you are on the downtown mall and want to get vaccinated, stop by the mobile unit, and we'll do your vaccine. We have a variety of neighborhood locations, and those are on our website, and you can go there. Most of them are open, so anybody can show up at any of those neighborhood events and get vaccinated. And similarly, we will do place-based vaccines. So if you have a business that you want us to come to, just call our hotline and explain that to the operator that answers, and they'll get you hooked up with the individual's schedules. And we're happy to come out and bring the mobile unit set up there and vaccinate clients and individuals who've come to your business. The other question that we are asked a lot about right now is testing because there's an increased case incident. We were almost testing zero individuals in the community, and we really scaled back because our staff would sit out in the hot sun for four hours, and no one would come, and we got lonely. But we're beginning to ramp it back up because there is more of a demand for testing. UVA continues to do testing Monday at Church of Incarnation and Tuesday at Matt Zion First African Baptist Church. And again, no appointments needed. You don't have to, you just show up, and they'll run the test in your car. We do testing every Friday, starting at 5 o'clock at the health department. You can make a reservation if you want by calling our hotline, but you can also show up. Right now, we have plenty of space, and so just showing up is not really a problem. If it starts to get to the hundreds, then you probably want to make an appointment for us. There are other places, CVS and Walgreens, and the addresses are there on the slide in tiny print. So download them, and you can expand them. And they will do testing as well. Just call because they have a variety of different ways to go about that. And of course, most physician offices will do testing if you need it, as do urgent care. So there are places, and we will, of course, expand our testing capabilities if the demand requires it. So I put our hotline number on here. We still have that fully staffed with operators from 8 to 4:30, including individuals who speak Spanish. And if your language of choice is not English or Spanish, we can get an operator on the phone to help us translate as well. So please don't let that be a barrier. We've got a great language service that we can call upon. And then vaccines.gov will give you all the places that you can go and get your vaccine of choice in our community. So that's where we're at right now, and I'm, of course, happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you so much for being here. I did catch part of your town hall earlier today, so I know you've been a busy lady. So thank you very much. Board members, do you have questions? We'll start down with Ashonda.
Good afternoon, or good evening, thank you for coming. Are there any cases of the Epsilon or the Lambda variant in Virginia?
So that's a great question. If, there is a place on the state website, it's not, it's not super easy to navigate to. So what I'll do is send the link directly to it, and it tracks variants of interest. And I, I'm gonna give, I looked at it earlier today, and I do not think that there have been any reported. Now, a couple of caveats with that. We don't test and genotype every single case because we don't have enough X virus sometimes, or because it's sent to a commercial lab that doesn't do that. So this is only a sub-sample, so it doesn't mean we haven't had it. Just means, in what we've tested, we haven't had it. But I'll get that link for you, and I will make sure that it gets shared. Just, only, it's there, it's public, it's just kind of tricky to find.
Yeah, I had a hard time navigating the site. And my second question is, how many cases are there right now in Virginia of children under 12 that, you know, can't be vaccinated?
Oh, that's a great question. I'll have to look it up. I actually don't know that off the top of my head. You saw the percentage, that's the total percentage that we've had over the entire. So right now is a little tricky too because most of our data is a cumulative type. And so how, you know, how do you count at the moment? Let me, if it's okay, let me go back and sort of fiddle with the data and see what the best estimate I can get for you. And I'll get it out to see. I'm, I don't even want to take a guess because I'm afraid.
Okay, I was trying to figure out, I'm asking because I had problems with the site trying to figure it out. So I apologize for throwing it at you.
No, no, it's fine. The site is really good for looking at cumulative totals. It's terrible for looking at a moment in time. And some of that is just the way we find out about cases, and our investigation, and the lag. But some of it is just, like, that's not a good, but those aren't perfect excuses. Some of it is just that we just don't do it.
Okay, and then I saw a report recently, and I believe they were at like the Children's Hospital of St. Louis, and the doctor there was saying that as far as children go, he felt like the Delta variant was a game changer, and how it affects children. Can you, do you have any insight on that?
Yeah, so that's, that's a, I think I saw that same article. So we were on the town hall earlier, and the pediatricians earlier felt generally that Delta was not treating the kids that they had taken care of any differently than any of the other variants. I think one of the reasons it's a game changer is it's so infectious. Like, you know, the comparison has been chicken pox and... And I remember chicken pox parties because I'm that age. And, you know, you'd send all your kids over so they all got infected. And if they spent an hour in a room with someone with chicken pox, you knew they were going to get it. It's just that sort of infectious. And previously COVID, you know, infected people, but it wasn't really nearly to that same degree. So I think for that alone, it's a game changer for everybody. And I also think the fact that if you are vaccinated and you're that, you're putting out that many viral particles, that's, that's a big change, so.
I promise I'm almost done. With the updated guidance, I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. If you are vaccinated and you're exposed or you test positive, you have a breakthrough case, you have to quarantine?
So if you have a breakthrough case, the, our recommendation, like you document it and you were vaccinated, we're going to ask you to stay home because you're still infectious, right? We saw that graph. If you were exposed, the current CDC recommendations are that you wear a mask so that if you are infectious, you're minimizing your spread and they get tested three to five days afterwards. And I, you know, I think that's reasonable way to start. I think, you know, some of it would depend in my world on, you know, what exactly was your exposure? Was it just 15 minutes to somebody that was positive? And you are both outside and, you know, then that sounds really great. Or is it that my husband came down with COVID and I've been, you know, sleeping in the same room as him for the last week? Well, I'm probably going to personally err on the side of staying home for 14 days because the likelihood that I'm going to end up being positive is higher. So, so yes, that's where we're at right now.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
So Dr. Barnes, what are the, what is the likelihood of someone that has been vaccinated being asymptomatic with the Delta variant?
Yeah, another really great question. And I don't know that we even have the data for that. To really know that, what we would have to do is a very large surveillance study where we just tested people all the time and, and kept track of all of their symptoms. You know, if you look at the Provincetown data, they, a large proportion of them actually were symptomatic with Delta, mildly symptomatic, most of them. Most of them had upper respiratory symptoms that you could attribute to lots of things, but did go and get tested. So, you know, if you just look at that, I would say that the number of people who have no symptoms at all and are wandering around infected is relatively low in comparison to people who would have mild symptoms. I think the worry is that, you know, how many of us have had a bad cold and said, wow? Or have said, my allergies, right now we're coming into ragweed season because now I can't breathe again. And so is it, are my sniffles and my cough and my achy eyes because it's ragweed season or because I was exposed to COVID? I mean, I could go in and get tested every week, but, but lots of people probably won't do that. So, so I don't have an answer really is what I'm, I'm saying.
So is it advisable if someone thinks they have a summer cold or those allergy symptoms to get tested? What, what would be, what would be in your mind as a medical professional, the linchpin to get tested versus saying it's a summer cold or it's my allergy?
So I would, so I'm going to preface this by saying I no longer see patients, but if I were a practicing physician and I, anecdotally, what I hear from people who have kids, for example, and are taking their kids in for fever, summer colds, is that they all get tested for COVID. And I think most primary care providers are going to do the same thing. They're going to rule that out first. And then if that's negative, then they're either going to go down their differential of what other serious things it could be, or they're going to say, you probably have a summer cold or your allergies have started to kick in. So I, I always think it's a, if you're worried about it, get tested. It's free at the Health Department, it's free. We do not charge for testing and we are happy to test anybody, including kids. We'll test kids. So that is, if you think you've got symptoms that could be consistent, get yourself tested. Friday nights at the Health Department.
Thank you.
Dr. Barnes, thank you for coming. Looking two or three months down the road, what are the medical experts saying in regards to this virus? Are we going to see a major spike two or three months, four months down the road?
Yeah.
What are they, what are, what are the trends? What are they seeing?
So we're really fortunate. We have a major medical center and research institution right in our backyard. And the UVA Data Institute does do modeling, real-time modeling. When I looked at their most recent projections, and these are just projections, right? They take the available information and put it into a model, which they're always trying to update with more information. The spike should occur mid-September is what it looks like right now. So we're the very beginning of it coming up. Now, models are only as good as the information that you have and people's behavior changes. So if everyone gone out and got vaccinated right now and we were all very careful about being socially distant and staying outside and wearing our masks when we had to be inside, that may, that may alter that model, right? They're basing it on the current situation given this virus. So we're looking at mid-September, right after school starts.
Thank you for coming today, appreciate that your time. I have a lot, so you kept saying like, if you're worried, you know, get tested. I totally agree, but I'm worried as a school division about all of our kids and our staff. So how, what is it that this Health Department, this government, you know, state government or federal government, what are they recommending regarding testing? And specifically related to the federal funding that there is available for, hold on, I have a.
School surveillance testing?
Yeah, the CARES Act, the, how can we access portions of that funding, Virginia's funding for a kind of testing regimen?
So you, you can, there is a program and I can put you in touch with that. Here is my understanding of the program and things to think about when you do it. My understanding, when the last, the last presentation that I sat through on this was that they were pooling samples. And so they, and it wasn't everybody, if I remember right, it was random samples. And then they pooled that, sent it off. And then if you had a positive, then they would come back and retest everyone who was part of that pool. So a pooled sample is, I go around and I swab every single person in this room. They all go into the same container and one container is run to see if anyone in the room was positive. And then you come back and you swab each one individually and send each one off. All sounds fine and they, I think they had switched to a PCR test. So that's a better test. Some of the original ones used antigen tests, which aren't not, not great. They're not great tests. The PCR ones though are good, but here's the problem. You're not testing everyone, you're only testing a random pool. And those kids are still in school. And then they're still in school when you do the confirmatory one too. So, you know, testing would work if you could put a swab and stuck it in something and immediately it said yay or nay. And they either walked in the building or they went back home or preferably before they even got to the school building. Like when they walked out the door, they had a swab that said yay or nay. The issue with the testing is that now you, you can do it and there is funding to do it, but it's not testing everybody, it's just a sample. And the kids are still around in the school building until you get that final confirmatory test. And that may be a couple of days.
And that is because of the, the federal law specifically has those sorts of.
I, I'm.
I don't understand why it would have to be this random, you know, and a pooled thing and, you know, why do you need to do it that way?
Well, you do it that way because it's the easiest way to, so how many kids?
You could do it differently.
Coming in a thousand in the high school or I don't know what.
I'm mostly concerned about our elementary schools where our students aren't vaccinated.
Right, but even, that's even harder because doing a nasal, pharyngeal swab on a five-year-old is challenging.
I'm very familiar with that.
And you can imagine trying to do that on a weekly basis or bi-weekly.
What recommendations you have around testing, given how important we are worried about our students?
Yes, so my, my, the state recommendation is we have this program and we encourage schools to participate in them. But that is the official recommendation. If you were asking me as a scientist and previous physician, I think the way the program is set up will not provide the, what you were looking for, which is keeping infected kids who are otherwise asymptomatic or mildly symptomatic out of the classroom. It's not deep enough, you're not testing all of the people. And while the results are coming back, they're still in the classroom. So, and, and I don't think there's a test that's practical to screen every single kid individually as they come in the classroom. We just don't have one right now.
Do you have anything like for symptomatic kids, like a nurse could give the?
So that's a different story. Now you're testing people who are symptomatic. And my recommendation was those never, kids never get into the classroom. Now, I know that, I know the reality, I was a parent once too, still am, but. And every parent, you know, says, no, I have a really important meeting or no, you're going to school, you're fine. We, there are point-of-care tests that are PCR that look pretty good. We haven't really had an opportunity to have much experience with them locally because they're backordered, because everybody wants them. So that might be an, an option. You know, we'd have to think about the medical protocols, who's the ordering physician? There's, you know, there would be a whole series of things we'd have to work out. But they're, but they are point-of-care. You could, the school nurse maybe could do them. I have to look at what is allowed under school nurses. And they take 30 minutes to get the results back. I mean, you're sitting there and you're, you're just waiting while it processes. So, so that, that would be an option to look at. There are a couple of other ones that we're told are available, but I can't get them at this point.
Okay, so you're saying that there are these 30-minute tests that could potentially be, once they're not backordered, point-of-care type if we set up some infrastructure around prescribing physicians? And, and we could get the, like perhaps based on the regulation, a nurse might be able to, a school nurse might be able to provide that and wait 30 minutes and get the results back.
Right.
Okay.
We'd have to explore all, there, you know, there's a lot of, what does your license allow? Who's your, but.
I'm sure, yeah.
But, but yes, there are tests out there, they're called Q, if you want to look them up, C-U-E.
And you're saying that the, and I don't mean to be like sharp in this way, so I'm going to try to not be sharp. You're saying that the kind of state program for getting tested is inadequate, sort of? I mean, it's just not perfect.
It's not perfect and I think it, it, it. I, yeah.
But testing is a very significant part of, of, of stopping the spread.
Testing is, is, yes, knowing who is positive and making sure they quarantine. Yeah. And or isolate and people who are exposed to that individual quarantine is a critical part of stopping disease spread. It is our bread and butter, so yes, absolutely. And testing is part of that. And there could be ways to set up a testing strategy, although it would be very resource-intensive, but we could think about it and costly as well, if you think about it. But just putting all that out there, the current state program that I am aware of has issues that I would want every school to be comfortable with before adopting it.
Yeah.
But it is available and there's lots of money out there to do that testing. And it's a commercial program, so there is that. It's not your school nurses, it's a commercial, but it's not testing symptomatic people. It's random sample pooled with testing, follow-up testing if you have a positive.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple more questions, so I don't mean to be. Ms. Dr. President?
She's told you what the state is recommending. We have expressed interest in the program as a school division. I've also heard what some of the other pediatricians have said. We aren't representing the state and heard some of the same concerns that Dr. Barnes is mentioning. So we will be hearing from companies about this. And so we haven't said yes, we will, or we haven't said no, we want. I would follow the advice of our local pediatricians and health department before we embarked on something that we didn't think would help us.
You're really fortunate to be able to have some expert pediatricians.
And I think that's what makes us a really unique environment to support a large-scale kind of testing.
I, I, yes, I think, and I'm happy to be involved in further discussions. I would just want to make sure that before you spend a ton of time and resources, that it's really going to provide what you are actually trying to achieve.
Right, fair enough. Okay, so a couple of things. One is that graphic which lists all the CVSs and all of the Walgreens, like you can't get tested all of those. So I think it might be helpful to change it. And, and I would never call the CVS because they are never going to be able to answer your questions. Like a voicemail, I mean, it's like a rabbit hole and it's a nightmare. So definitely just go to the website and test, you know, like CVS, COVID testing or something like that. So what is your experience about when results are happening, getting to people today? I mean.
It, it depends on where you go. So we send all of ours actually to UVA, but it's the state lab. UVA has a contract with our state lab and we get them back within 24 hours. So that's one of the advantages of coming to the Health Department. It's both free and quick. Labs, my understanding with most of the commercial labs is they have a relatively fast turnaround. It's not like the 14 days of last summer where you couldn't ever get a result back. But it is going to be a couple of days, right? You're, even if you go to your physician's office, you go to a private physician, they put it in a little box, it has to wait, LabCorp, Quest or whoever comes and picks it up. They have to transport it, then they have to batch run it, then the result, you know, we're talking two or three days, even in the best of circumstances. We're just really fortunate because we just, we drop it off at UVA and they just run it in the next batch. So.
I just want you to, like from my anecdotal experience, like I've had over 20 tests over the past year. And this, I was told my kids were tested today, three to five days. Yeah, so, and I, last week, I got my results in 36 hours. So it's a very interesting time.
Yeah, and that probably.
It's going to get worse probably.
Yeah, it represents what's happening across the nation. Because if, if your test went to a commercial lab, they're getting labs from all over the place. And so LabCorp is, you know, that, for example, not to pick on LabCorp, they're a great lab group, but you know, they have a finite capacity. And when it's reached, then it's reached. UVA has, my experience has been there, they seem to be able to expand and contract a little more easily than others. So I, I have not heard that we're taking three to five days. It seems to still be about 24, maybe 40, 80 if you're tested.
I guess I was also wondering about, like one of the graphs, I mean, you had vaccinated and it said 10 to 19. And I was just curious why we wouldn't just do 12 to 19?
That is such a great question. Okay, that's, I, I, yes, I have asked for that. That's a state, that's just the way the state gives us the data. It's, you're right, why wouldn't we do 12 to 19? We've said the same thing.
Yeah.
Why don't we just do 12 to 19 and we get, this is what you get.
It really does, you know how it is. I mean, we're trying to make policy decisions here and I just feel like the data is so ineffective.
Yes, we have had lots of conversations with the state. In fact, I was going to put the, the school metrics and the locality metrics that they use on the pandemic metric and it's actually been pulled because they're retooling it, so it is more closely matching the CDC. So you can go to the CDC and it will tell you what the transmission burden is. Albemarle right now is in substantial, not high, which is the highest, the second category down. It's Charlottesville, yeah.
It looks like 120, it's like 120, so that, I think that's above the 100 threshold or something like that. But yeah.
It's a color.
Yeah, so the graphs are still available and right now would probably say red. Is that what we're, or we're orange?
Orange.
Great, that was all the questions I had, thank you again and I really appreciate you.
Happy to.
Thank you, Dr. Bonds. I think a lot of questions already been asked. What I would like for you to respond to, because you've become a very trusted voice throughout the last 18 months, and I appreciate your expertise. If, I, I was wondering if you, if you could respond to that parent at home, that they're hearing all this information, you know, that's going on now. What would you recommend that they do, whether, you know, in three weeks, we're going to be starting school? Should they go? Should they not? What, what work, what advice would you give that mom, that father that's wondering what to do?
Um, so here's what I would do. So first of all, I am a mom, but most of my kids are in their twenties and vaccinated. Yay. Go team. So, and I, I have lots of staff who have young kids. I think having kids in school is the most important thing. It was tragedy last year that so many of our kids really lost that opportunity to be in a classroom with their peers and their teacher and socialize, particularly the younger kids, but, but even high school kids. That's such an important part of growing up. It really is, in, in whatever capacity or whatever setting you as a parent choose to. And I'm a huge public school. I think it's great. So I, I really applaud schools working to make it work. What I would look for if I were a parent is, what has the school done with regard to things like ventilation? Have they addressed any of the ventilation issues, or do they at least acknowledge that air turnover and ventilation is good? And that could be something, if you're in a building or you're a school that can't afford that, by saying, we acknowledge that, and we're spending as much time outside as we can. We've set up some tents, and we're going to have classrooms outside for whatever the time allowed or the climate and weather will allow. I would want to make sure that they, that we were talking about wearing masks in the classroom, wearing masks between class, not necessarily outside. I don't think that adds a ton of protection outside. And this time of year, it's hot and uncomfortable to be masked outside. If schools wanted to adopt that, I think that's great. But, but I think inside in particular, because the air is recirculating and there's a lot. If I am a parent of a kid who's 12 or over, they would be vaccinated. I would want them vaccinated. It's a safe vaccine. It's an effective vaccine. I've been vaccinated. My kids have been vaccinated. Pediatricians have gotten their kids vaccinated. That tells me that there are lots of people out there who trust this vaccine. I, I understand that not having it fully approved by the FDA is a barrier for some people, but that's going to happen in the next, I think, probably weeks to month or two. And it's not, the review is not really going to review any, I mean, certainly they will update their safety data, but there's been no safety signal that's been seen since that's emergency use. And now we have millions and millions of people who have had this vaccine, and really, generally, low side effects, low risk of really adverse impact, and, and huge benefit and gain. So those are the things I would look for. If I could get my kid vaccinated, I, I would have, I would have done that already. If I, I'd send them to school, but I'd want to make sure that they were wearing a mask, that hopefully their peer group was also wearing a mask to help, and teachers and staff to help model that behavior and to keep everybody safe until, certainly until we see that trend begin to reverse.
Thank you.
Well, the benefit of being last, a lot of the questions you've addressed, and I really appreciate you addressing all of our anxieties, which you can tell we have. I, I guess a couple of things. One is that I, I really appreciate hearing about the pros and cons of the various testing systems. You know, I was hoping that that we would be able to do more of that and that it would be effective for, you know, for our purposes. And I guess there's a lot of uncertainty about that at this point, whether, you know, because of the delays involved. But I guess, I hope that we can still continue that conversation. And, and I was wondering if you could just, what I'm thinking about is what's likely to happen after school opens? And I think we're, we are likely to see some cases, some positives in some cases. Could you, as our expert, help us to sort of run through what, what, what should we do then? When do we shut down classroom? When do we shut down a school? What, what are your thoughts about that?
Yeah, so that's a great question, and, and I like to, I'm, I'm kind of a preparer. I like to have all those thoughts out. It's going to depend a little bit on what happens in the circumstance. So my understanding is you've adopted universal masking inside, so that's great. And already that's going to make our job at the health department somewhat easier. I think what you'll see happen is, is similar to what happened last year. We have a dedicated team devoted to schools that already have worked with school leaders, know the school nurses. When a case gets reported, they'll work very closely with the local school nurse, decide who might be at risk and what the criteria are. Is it just going to be kids that were in the classroom within a certain area? Did the, the child play on a sports team? Did they go on a field trip? Do they ride a bus? There's all different scenarios that we have to take into account. That's what the case investigator will do with the school nurse primarily, talk about. And, and that school nurse is a really important part of our team, because they're going to go back to the teacher, to the coach, to the bus driver, and really begin to investigate who sat next to the kid. Were they wearing a mask the whole time? Were they following the guidelines that we'd set up, or was there a break in those guidelines? All the kids carpoolled to the game and they didn't wear masks while they were in the car. That's going to be a problem, and we might have to ask those kids that were in that car to quarantine for some period of time. Were they vaccinated or not? And again, these are all factors that we're going to have to take into account. And so we spend a lot of time talking to people who are familiar with the situation, and then we work to make recommendations. So it's really hard for me to say X, Y, and Z is going to happen without knowing all of those different things. But I can say that we have really experienced case investigators, really experienced now. It's a great team. We have people who are really dedicated to the schools. They sit and lead the calls that happen every week. So I, I, I think, and you have great school nurses too, who are also really experienced at doing this, not just for COVID, but we rely on them for other communicable diseases where we've done investigations in the past. When we've had chickenpox outbreaks or pertussis outbreaks. We work with the staff all the time at the schools. So, you know, what our recommendations are is just going to depend. You know, would we ever recommend closing a school? Gosh, I, I, I'm trying to think of a scenario where that could happen. I doubt it. Would we recommend closing a classroom? I don't know. Again, that would have to be a pretty serious break, and we'd have to see some pretty serious cases. That seems more plausible. I think what you'll see are things like, and where we saw a lot of cases last year, weren't, they weren't classroom. They were things like sports, because kids carpoolled on and then didn't wear the appropriate gear and were in it. And so we might end up saying, okay, like after football team is out for 10 days, so sorry. I hope that doesn't happen, you know. Sports are a really important part of kids' development and growth, and we want them to participate in that. But it's those are the situations where we're more likely. It's typically not classrooms. It's typically extracurricular activities or clubs or places where people relax.
Or lunch.
Or lunch. And again, outside, outside is great. It's been beautiful this week. Eat your lunch outside.
Yeah, I guess the unknown with this, it seemed to me like schools were doing really well, actually, last year. But this variant is so much more contagious that it's, it is maybe a game changer, and I guess that's, we just don't know yet.
We just don't know.
What it'll look like.
Yeah, and I, again, I think you guys are, are doing all the right things to really try and control that. And, and I applaud you as a school district for doing that. I, I think that really, we just have to remember that the goal is to keep these kids in school, right? Our goal is that kids have an educational experience that's meaningful, that includes all aspects of it. And having the opportunity to attend school in person is really a critical part of that. And we are committed at the health department to helping you and your parents and your kids achieve that.
I have one quick question. Hope it's quick. UVA last year did all this wastewater testing, and I wondered what, what your opinion is of that? Is that something that might be of use for a school division?
That, it's, I actually have great conversations with Dr. Amy Mathers, who runs a lot of that wastewater testing. And it's been really fun to hear about. In a previous life, I did not that sort of research for the different types. So I always like hearing about new things like that. I, I, I think it can be really helpful, particularly if, as sort of Sentinel, like, oh my gosh, we're beginning to see increases. So I think where she did it last year in dormitories was really helpful, because sometimes it would pick up an early signal of an outbreak in a dorm setting that we weren't otherwise aware of. And that allowed us to really get it under control really quickly. Another situation where I can see it might be really helpful is if you could sample wastewater coming out of a long-term care facility, where you may not know that there's a case in there, except it shows up in the wastewater. And then you can go in and test everybody and institute tighter mitigation measures. So I, I think it can be really helpful. I'm happy to ask what she's doing with that right now, just to see what her plans are for the next year. It's a, it's a great addition to kind of the public health toolbox.
Great. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Bonds. I mean, on, on that line, Sherry, Dr. Craft, I know when we had the COVID committee last year, part, one of the groups had a lot of discussion and started to really look seriously at wastewater testing, how feasible or reasonable that was going to be here in the schools, kind of was in question. I know they were looking and talking about maybe doing it in neighborhoods or pockets and trying to tie that to areas, whether or not we could look at vaccination rates, so something like that. But that might be something, you know, that we need to revisit and get those conversations happening again. But it was pretty intriguing to look at that as a possibility. Dr. Bonds, in one of your slides, when it was looking at the zero to nine age group of cases, I was just curious how that compares, if you, if you even real, remember, to say a year ago.
I don't. I, I could probably develop a sequential, I think we could look at cases in a time sequence of, I'd want it to be enough cases so that it was meaningful data, but.
And maybe zero to 12.
Yeah. Let me talk to the data gurus back at the health department. I think some of it is what data we can get from the state. But, so your request would be ideally some sort of time sequence of zero to 12, from say, the start of the pandemic, or whenever we begin to have enough cases of zero to 12, to current and presumably ongoing, so that you can look at burden over time.
Yes, I mean, and, and for me particularly, I remember last year, the discussion was, not from us per se. My concern was always like, we don't know what this is going to, or how it's going to impact that age group. And, and again, you know, this is part of the evolution of this or, or just science as they study anything that's unknown. It changes, and we're, we're always trying to figure out what we don't know or, or update what we do know with the new science as it comes in, the new data. But I was always very concerned about, about our students and the younger people, because we didn't know. And everybody said, we don't need to worry about them, right? You know, they're, it's not as transmissible. You know, we need to worry about our older folks, which we did need to do that, not discounting that. But now we're seeing a shift with the Delta, and we are seeing and hearing, you know, that this is impacting the kids. And, and this is, you know, it's scary for parents and for all of us. We're, we're hearing stories of kids on ventilators and, and hospitalizations and, and, you know, very serious. So, you know, I am curious to see just what these numbers are for our health district. And, and then do, are any of those zero to nines, have they been hospitalized? Do we have any serious?
Yeah, that I, I, I can. We definitely have hospitalizations by age group on our website right now. I'm trying to remember what age bracket we're using. I'll, I'll have to look at it. I don't think we've had, I, I wouldn't want to say we have had none. We certainly haven't had a lot of kiddos hospitalized in, in, in this area. Certainly there have been some.
Right, definitely. I guess, yeah, to, to Ms. McKeever's point too, I have concerns just about COVID testing shortages or difficulty or challenges, I think I've been hearing this week. And so I don't know if that's just, you know, that the focus has gone elsewhere. But just wanting people to, you know, continue to be mindful of that, you know, and I think going to or reaching out to your primary care physician is, is a really good option, because I think you could probably get in quicker to see your primary care physician as well, instead of trying to go through CVS or Walgreens right now, since there seems to be a backlog or, you know, minimal amount of appointments. I also am more of a statement, so I want to thank you for everything you're doing. But as far as just more of a general statement to the community and what this means for us to take on universal masking and how important that is, I think. And again, I alluded to the fact that a year ago, you know, we, per guidance of, of the governor and, and leadership above us, you know, made the decision to close schools. And, and we weren't sure what was going to happen, you know, if, if the schools would be the super spreader site. And we did that with, you know, our older folks in mind. And then again, until science could figure out what was going on and what was the best way to deal with this. And we all know, and we've all heard what, what the impacts have done to students and, and the sacrifices that, that the students have made. And we, as a school division, we want every student who chooses, you know, to be back in the building. And we are all committed to doing that. We had a wonderful COVID committee that worked really hard with teachers and community members and healthcare professionals to, to really put in place a lot of these mitigation strategies. The air filtration, I mean, to Mr. Wade's question and to a parent who might be wondering or have a kindergartner who's just coming into Charlottesville City Schools. I mean, we, we did a lot of work, and I think we all need to be really proud of that. And we had some great leadership from a lot of people here in the room. So I'm grateful to, to everybody who worked together to put, you know, air filtration in place, to make sure we had the mask, to put the distancing, to train our nurses, all of those things that we just barely kind of got to practice, you know, at the end of last year. And it is, it's a little scary, because now we're bringing everybody back in. But I think it's important that, and we've got a lot of this information on the website, our website, you know, to go and look at the work that we've done. And I'm sure that, you know, with new teacher training and teachers coming back, that a big part of that is reviewing what our protocols and practices need to be. But reminding everybody to reach out to your principals as far as parents, if you're not sure how things are going to be done or how things are going to be handled, you know, to ask questions and to support each other. But Charlottesville City Schools has done a great job, and we do have some wonderful people in the community. Dr. Bonds, your, your team, Dr. Periello. I could name, I'm drawing blanks on, on all of them. Cameron Webb, I'm drawing a blank on Dr.
Forgot.
Bell, yes, sorry, Dr. Bell. I mean, we have so many resources here and, and so many great advocates for what, you know, what we could do, what we should do, the efficacy of the vaccines, and again, the masks. I mean, masks are, in my opinion, you know, just a minor inconvenience to the alternative. And, and I think it's the least that we can do as a community. to to help each other, to keep each other safe and and to get our kids back in the building safely. So I again, thank you so much for your time and for everything you do.
Absolutely. And if you have other questions that come up, please don't hesitate to reach out to us. There is a weekly school call. Ryan McKay typically leads all of our COVID. He is on a well-deserved vacation for the next week. And so I'm happy to pinch it, but when he gets back, he'll absolutely be available for anything. And of course, I'm always happy to come and chat as well. So thank you all and thank you for what you're doing.
All right, next we have reconfiguration update. Ms. Powell, if you'd like to introduce our guest.
Certainly, we have a at least one guest here this evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Henderson. This evening, we're very fortunate to have Wick Knox with us. He is a the principal in charge and the project manager from B M D O. And so he is going to be sharing some information with you regarding the reconfiguration update in general. And then there's a second piece to this agenda item, which is about some potential funding work to be done. So, please take the podium. Thank you.
Good to see you, Bond. Thank you. Just for, okay, great. About a deal with fogging glasses and masks as we come back here. Great. So, um, thank you for having us here. Can you hear everybody here? Are you good? And again, thank you for the trust you guys are placing in B M D O to lead you through this process. We have been hard at work since mid-February this thing. And I think we've made a tremendous amount of progress and are are enjoying enjoying it as we go. And it's been a great process engaging the community. Our most recent community design team meeting was Tuesday at Buford Middle School. It was our first in-person one. We are really excited to start in-person meetings. We had a second one scheduled for the Walker site on Saturday. We have already postponed that because of the conversation we just had about the changing protocols with COVID and also scheduling issues. But it was great to have people in person at at Buford last night. A lot of the feedback we've heard from community design team members were, I've never actually been to Walker, I've never been to Buford. And so that was very important to get people there to see firsthand the condition of the facilities and also to understand the challenge of the terrain. As you know, those sites are not flat. They are very hilly and very challenging. So just kind of understanding that was great. We had, um, we had pizza, we had ice cream, we tried to make it very family-friendly. We had activities for children. And we also broke up into groups and did tours and walked around and and saw the project. We had one of the things that we've heard from the design team, it's like, there's so many great resources here in Charlottesville. Make sure you're tapping into all of them. So we we heard from the Cultivate Charlottesville Food Justice Intern Program about the importance of the garden and and all the work and that's gone into that. Carolyn Carolyn Skyler from Wild Rock came and talked about the importance of outdoor space and the importance of play. We tend to discount the importance of play at the middle school level and how important that is. And also, they hosted some of the outdoor activities that we had for the for the kids there. And then Nancy Deutsch from the UVA Ed School Youth Next Program also came and spoke about middle schools, middle schoolers, what they need and look for in an environment. And then based on that presentation, we then split up into groups and did a tour around the building. And the challenge was to kind of look at these spaces from what you just heard from Nancy about what is important to middle schoolers for the development of the 12, 13, 14-year-old children? And do these spaces support it or do they not support it, right? So some of the things that we heard in that process, when we came back and we had our group reports back, was the the lack of natural light and outdoor connections. If you've been to, you know, Walker and Buford are identical identical buildings. If you've been there, you you've seen that. A lack of any kind of like sense of arrival, understanding orientation and where you are in the buildings. One of the quotes was the hallways are dungeons. That there's a a real disconnect between the spaces that were renovated in 2013, the science labs and the rest of the rest of the spaces. Someone even said, you know, it's like, here's what you could have everywhere, but you don't, right? This is all that we've been able to do for you. And that it wasn't welcoming, it didn't feel, it didn't feel a place you wanted to be, was inaccessible. The toilets are a problem. The gym feels like a basement, even though it's not underground. And that outside of the garden, there's a lot of landscape there, but it's not very well-used. So those are some of the some of the feedback we heard from the community directly on Tuesday night. It was also in the larger discussion about the budget and where we are on the $60 million. And, you know, why can't we have a brand-new building? People are still trying to figure that out. We'll get to that just in a moment. There were also some some things that came up about the needs for wraparound services at the middle school level, too. I think we talked about that in the school board retreat back in in May. And then, again, we heard the importance of the garden. It's not just a teaching space, but it's also a decompression and kind of emotional regulation space. And it's just a really critical part of that campus, all right? So I want to talk about that issue just briefly. And can you guys see what I'm presenting on your screens straight ahead? Okay, great. So this is the site plan of of Buford. And the highlighted area in red or the red triangle, that's the location of the garden right now. So it's to the west of the main building A, looking out towards the the fields. But if you look at any of the potential schemes that we're talking about, and we're talking about adding a lot of space to Buford. The the maximum number of students you've ever had at Buford was actually the year before the pandemic, the 2019, 2020 year, and your enrollment was 531 students. We're talking about building capacity for almost twice that, 1,050, right? So when you add all that space, you're really talking about a big building. And then also, you have to extend a fire lane around it for life safety purposes. So you can see that that dash line is the garden location. So between the building or the fire lane or something else, what we talked about in the in the third community design team meeting was that, hey, we may have to think about moving the garden and this big track that takes up a lot of space. We may have to rethink that in order to have a different configuration of space. So the garden can certainly stay close. The the green area in the solid red line is a potential place where it could go. We hear loud and clear the concerns about the garden and how that's very important. But I just wanted to let the board, bring the board up to speed on that issue and and why that exists. We have also been, over the course of the summer, we've been teaching summer school. Every Wednesday, we go to Buford. Michelle Bamberger has has led that effort for us. So it's been great to talk to the kids. That's the other one other opportunity we've had for in-person interaction. So and you hear, you know, the the more you talk to people, the more we learn and and the more information getting, it's always interesting. One of the comments here was that the cafeteria is too big and it's too small. It's too small for everyone to fit in together as a school, but it's too big to be comfortable and calm for eating. It can be kind of a jungle in there, we've heard, it's too loud. We always hear about the toilets not being adequate. And we also hear a lot of different things about outdoor space. As adults, we have concerns from security about this being a campus setup. We have to exit one building to go into another building. What we're mostly hearing from the kids is they love that, because the buildings are so lacking natural light and and nice welcoming spaces. That chance to go outside between buildings is a really welcome respite for the kids. So again, it's always interesting what you hear when you talk to more and more people. We look forward to continue doing that. Another update I want to give you is that we are actively hiring to be look for what we call peer engagers for the design team. This is to allow us to be able to reach out to parts of the community that we might not be able to to get to, people that might not want to be, listen to someone like me talk or take it on face value. So we are hiring paid positions to help us get the word out about what we're trying to do and get more people and get more feedback. We've hired our first one, Nido Washington, the C H S graduate from 2019. And we've also got four additional positions open. These are paid positions, we're paying $18 an hour for people to work on an hourly basis and help us get information out, whether it's going door-to-door or talking in the communities, like getting people to come to C D T events, to come to school board meetings, come to whatever events that we we schedule in the fall. So we're really excited about that. And if you if you have suggestions for people that might want to do that that job with us, please, please let us know. Okay, getting into the kind of the update of what we've been doing with the work. So in 2017, so back in 2017, when B M D O was hired to do the capacity study, we showed you these numbers that we could look at doing about 45,000 square feet of construction at the Walker campus or a pre-K building. You can look at doing about 187,000 square foot of construction and renovation at the Buford campus to achieve reconfiguration. And that the cost of all of this, back then, was going to be somewhere between 60 and 80 million dollars. That was the start of project in 2019. If we had done that, those projects would be finishing right now. We'd be moving into those new facilities. If you simply look at what we've seen in escalation since then and move that up to today, the value of those projects is 68 to 91 million dollars, just from inflation of 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 that point. One of the things, one of the things that we have talked about for quite a while is the importance of being able to start this project a year earlier than where city council currently has the the 50 million dollar place order. And that's simply because of inflation. If we can, if we can start this in 2023 instead of 2024, that's 1, 2.7 to 3.2 million dollars that you you save right there. That's a a big chunk that that you erase, right? So starting from there, you recall at the retreat in Richmond in Short Pump, we showed you this math exercise where we looked at not only different levels of renovation and new buildings, but even looked at like, maybe we don't build for the full 1050. Maybe we only build for the current needs and build build for, say, 900 students at Buford. Maybe we don't do anything at Walker and put all the money at Buford. Maybe we do a little bit of 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 each, a little something each. And those numbers range from 48 to almost 100 million dollars. When we presented these and went through in detail, nobody was very happy with it. And some of the feedback that we got, both from you guys and from the working group, was, let's go ahead and plan for if we think we need 1,050 students to meet our capacity, let's plan for that. Don't back off that, build smart for the future. And also, let's go ahead and explore our full wants, everything that we think we wanted to. Let's see what that would cost, right? So we went from there and we did that and we created our next round. Now we're in June and we created, sometimes I've I've referred to these as the dream versions, because they're everything that we could potentially want at both campuses. We looked at three different ones, options at each site, and we went and got these estimated. And the numbers came back really, really high. The average Buford cost was 89 million dollars. The average Walker, just to do kind of phase one, which was to get us to 20 classrooms of pre-K, we currently offer 18 to 20 pre-K classrooms, was 33 million dollars. And then it would be another 25 if we came back five years later and worked on Walker. But what we've said all along, from the moment we presented these, where these are not realistic amounts, given the resources that we have in the city, the amount of debt capacity we can take on, taxes that would be required, and our other spending needs that we have, right? So from there, well, first, let me explain a little bit about why those numbers are so incredibly high. And we've been quoted in the paper saying these are astronomical numbers, and they are astronomical numbers, right? Well, there's three components to your project cost, excuse me. There's the the hard costs, what we call the hard costs. That's the amount that you pay the general contractor, right? And then from there, you have to escalate that up out to the point of when the project's going to start. So typically, we use, we've been using about three and a half percent annual inflation. Every year, it goes up by three, thank you, Leslie. All right, and then beyond that, you have what we call soft costs, which is everything else that you don't pay the contractor, and that totals up to the total. So let's put a little context to this. So the hard cost numbers right now are through the roof. You've you've read about this in the newspaper. Steel has been up 325% in the past four months. And lead time is like 10 to 11 months. So when you're ready and you order, you've got the contractor on, you've got another year before you can put the steel frame up, right? Lumber is come back down, but it was up like 500 to 600%. It's now between 250 and 300% up. Plastics and resins up 45, metal products up 24%, HVAC equipment up 16%. So prices is really, really high, right? So then on, so then from there, so we we estimate, we price what it costs today at this bubble inflation. Typically, then we also say, okay, you're not going to be building, starting construction for a couple of years. So we need to put seven, eight percent on top of that. Now, most likely, most, both of those things are not going to stay, right? Either these big high prices we have are going to come down, probably, and then they'll escalate normally. Or they'll stay up and maybe escalation's not going to be what it typically is. Problem is, is that when we speak to city council about this, they're the stewards of our tax dollars. We have to be conservative and say, here's here's where we are, right? So the prices, the prices are really, really high just from what the economy is doing, right? And then the the last piece of that is the solve cost. So all of those things listed there are what the solve costs are. So you pay the contractor to build the building, but then you have furniture, equipment, computers, security systems, cameras, the servers that run them all, your permits fees, moving storage fees, hazardous materials, you know, what happens when you run into asbestos or something unknown in the ground? Utility meter fees, there are texture and engineering fees, commissioning, testing inspections, and then the big one is your construction, when something goes wrong. Typically, on a project, and I bet you've all heard this before, it's like, can you believe they spent all this money and did this, and then they didn't fix this or didn't do that? Typically, when that occurs, it's because someone has not budgeted enough for escalation and prices went up on them, or they didn't budget enough in software. They didn't have the contingencies available when other things came up. Or they or they didn't have enough money at the end to buy decent furniture. So you have a brand-new building with 1950 furniture. Those are all the things that make this a high price. And it's important to point this out, because if you took that 80, 89 million dollar price and gave it to a contractor, they'd say, it's crazy, it shouldn't cost that much, because they're only thinking about that part cost beast and not the full project cost. Okay? So these are, these are some of the schemes that we looked at. So the three different options, and I'm just going to show Buford as an example. So the first one, we said, okay, let's start off in a phase one and we'll be build to the west. We'll build a new athletics complex and new academics complex. We can move into that. Then we'll renovate building A in the dark blue there. We'll renovate and expand building B, which is the auditorium building and the arts complex. If you finish this in 2026, it would cost 86 million dollars total project costs, right? Another one we looked at was, okay, let's do both the auditorium and athletics to the west in phase one. We'll come back in a phase two and build new academics on the east side or the right side of the of the screen there. And then we'll renovate building A in the middle. This will take longer, we'll finish this in 2026 and it'll cost 92 million dollars. And we looked at another option where we said, okay, let's do a version where we build athletics and academics to the west. Then we will take everyone and move them off campus or move them somewhere else, put them into relocatables. And we'll renovate and finish everything else. We can finish this one in 2025, a year earlier, all right? It still costs 88 million dollars and it includes just over a million dollars in the cost for the temporary classrooms. So this is a first kind of, and we talked about this at the retreat. But here's a, so we have one data point that we've already learned something, right? Moving students off Buford for a year to speed up construction isn't worth it, right? We're finishing the year early, but we're still up in this 88 million dollar cost range and it's going to be about a million dollars to accommodate that. So that's already something that we've kind of taken off the table in terms of a consideration if we look at stuff. So I showed you this diagram at the at the retreat. This is a diagram of a typical design process, right? Kind of go all over the place and you're looking at all kinds of different ideas and you slowly kind of expand out and come back in. And that yellow line is about where we are right now, right? So we looked at everything, it went out to this big number, right? But now we came back in and we're trying to figure out where we are. But now we came back in and we're trying to figure out where we are. And so in July and at our last two, two, two CDT meetings ago, we came back and said, all right, those numbers clearly don't work. So now we're going to show you what you can get for fifty million dollars combined projects, project costs at both Buford and Walker, sixty million, seventy million, and eighty million, right? So at fifty million, again, I'm just going to show you Buford here. At eighty million, we were saying, all right, we'll, we'll put thirty five at Buford and fifteen at Walker. At thirty five million dollars, you basically built enough new academic space to the west just to accommodate the new students coming in. And then you could kind of do a light refresh of the existing building C, maybe expanded a little bit for some better size rooms for gym and fitness, in addition to just the gym. And then you can maybe have a little connection and a new admin to connect A and B. And you don't touch A and you don't touch B in any way. They stay exactly the way they are, right? Not great. And you're also down to one hundred and twenty five square feet per student. This is kind of a lean and mean version. Not great. Nobody likes this. So as we step up to the next level to the sixty, we're saying, all right, this is about forty four million we could spend. At this point, we could begin to do the same thing I just showed you, but also renovate B a little bit and renovate A just a little bit, not much. If we step up another level, now we can begin to get to a little bit more square foot per student, one hundred and forty four square feet per student. We're spending fifty million and we can do some new construction and some renovation, but still not be able to renovate all of A and all of B. By the time we get to that eighty million dollar total price, which we said, fifty million at Buford, twenty two at Walker, at this point, you can expand, build new and renovate and touch almost everything. And you get up to one hundred and thirty nine to one hundred and forty square feet per student with new construction. So let me try to put this in context and the square foot per student is an important thing. There's a lot of, a lot of, this is the most complicated slide with a bunch of numbers that I'm going to show you and I'm going to walk through it as slowly as I can, but it really has to do with the idea of square foot per student and what we should build and what the cost implications are. So if you look in the top left, where I've got that the red dotted line is, you've got four buildings at the Buford campus. They total up to be just under one hundred and two thousand square feet of area, right? If a lot of our dream scenarios said, okay, building D was basically built as temporary construction, the bricked up temporary construction, if you will, in nineteen eighty eight. It's really crappy. It leaks. It's not good. We should get rid of that. And building C, the gym, is just undersized and also has some leaking issues. We should get rid of that and we should build around A and D. But if you take those, if you start off one hundred and two thousand square feet, you take C and D away, you've got seventy eight thousand square feet left of. So how much more do you have to build to accommodate ten fifty? Okay, so this gets into the idea of capacity and comparing it against state averages. So if we're building, and Miss Morseberger asked this question at the retreat, which is, why are you showing me two different capacity numbers? What's the difference between the plant capacity and the VDOE capacity, right? So if we're planning for ten fifty, the ten fifty number reflects how you actually teach in a building, which means that not every single classroom is occupied for every period of the day. But you occupy the classrooms at about an eighty five percent utilization rate, which is six out of seven periods that allows for a planning period, and it just reflects the reality of how you schedule stuff, right? So the state of Virginia, the Commonwealth collects information on schools, but every school district is different and everyone has different scheduling. Some have block scheduling, some have period scheduling, some have things in between. So the only way they can get apples to apples numbers is they say all the classrooms are occupied a hundred percent of the time. So when you do that, the ten fifty number S ramps up to twelve thirty six. Does that make sense? So then, once you, so if you use that twelve thirty six number, then you can compare against all the other schools that are built as the Commonwealth, right? So using that metric, the average middle school that has been built over the past decade in the Commonwealth of Virginia has a hundred and fifty one square feet per student. Okay, so if we're just using that metric and saying, we should at least match what the average middle school is that we build in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we tear down C and D, and we, so we're starting with seventy eight thousand square feet, we would need to to build a total of one hundred and eighty six thousand square feet, or you need one hundred and eight thousand square feet new. Just the new stuff. Forget the renovation, but just the new. Well, those, those astronomical high numbers that we got, if you parse them out, the escalated number is about four hundred and fifteen dollars a square feet, which is, again, crazy hot. We, we bid an expansion to Croze Elementary in March of this year, and it came out as just over three hundred dollars a square foot, which is much more normal for school construction in central Virginia. So again, hopefully the numbers are a lot better. But if we're planning those numbers, it shows that if you just take the square footage of four fifteen, multiply it by building one hundred and eight thousand square feet, add that solve cost multiplier of twenty seven percent for all that other stuff you have to pay for, you have fifty seven million dollars just to build the new square footage required, right? So that, that just kind of puts that in perspective. So if we look at those three test bits I showed you, we were showing more than one hundred and eight. We were showing about one hundred and sixteen thousand square feet because we've got some extra square footage required to connect all these existing buildings. So there we were seeing that resulted in about sixty one million dollars. Okay, if we look at some different options here. There we go. So if we, if we kept C and only demolished D, we would need to build ninety five thousand extra square feet. That's fifty million dollars. If we demolished C and kept D, we would need to build ninety seven thousand square feet. That's fifty one. If we didn't do any demolition and we kept the D building, which is not a great building, and we kept C as is, which isn't great, and just built what we needed to meet the state average at these high numbers, you're talking about forty four point eight million dollars just from the math exercise, right? So thank you for sticking with me on that. So when we showed all that to the community design team, and then the day after our community design team meetings, we have our working group meetings. The reaction we got from both groups was pretty similar, which was, well, we certainly can't afford the one hundred and twenty three, but we didn't really like anything you showed us at fifty, sixty, seventy, and eighty. And it feels like you're trying to split the money too much and do everything halfway at both sites. And what we need to do is we need to focus on reconfiguration. We need to do it within the first phase of work and to make sure that we can get the sixth grade to Buford. We don't leave the fifth grade alone at Walker and we can at least bring the pre K to Walker in some way. So based on those goals, the directions that that we received from the working group was go ahead and plan on spending sixty million dollars at Buford. Because at that point, you can build new and at least renovate everything to some degree. Right? And that, and also do your best to align with the state averages on square foot per student. We don't have to hit the one hundred and fifty square feet. There are some really great middle schools out there that are about one hundred and forty, one hundred and forty two thousand square feet per student. So that one forty to one fifty range is a good place to kind of check and make sure you're building the right amount of work, right? We've also been told, stick with the idea of starting in twenty twenty three. We don't like paying extra two to three million dollars just to inflation that we could put in the building and don't give up on the energy performance goals. That's important. For Walker, the plan then becomes, let's go ahead and plan on reconfiguring and moving the pre K into Walker as is. And we will spend as, as the smallest amount we can to make that work by doing things like outdoor spaces, playgrounds, and maybe going in, building all, buying all the furniture that you need for, for people that are this tall, right? But not spending the money to convert building A of Walker into a pre K facility. Because it, it's going to be really expensive and for very little to, to sometimes even almost nothing, that building could be central admin. It could be another elementary school. It could be wraparound services or some combination of the three. So let's occupy Walker as it is and then go ahead and plan on a standalone new building on that campus for twenty classrooms that are designed for people that are this big, that are a thousand square feet sized classrooms, that have a bathroom in the classroom. And let's develop that as a phase two and find the funding for that. We don't know where the funding is, but let's do that as a second step. So that's where, kind of where we are right now. These are the, the tax implications of this decision. Spending sixty million dollars is kind of what we were told. And it's based on looking at these potential impacts. So if you just took a fifty million dollar hypothetical project, what we're told from the city manager's office from City Hall is that that would require a, to do that and to do everything else in our CIP, West Main Street, affordable housing, Belmont Bridge, et cetera. We would need a ten for ten cent increase in the real estate tax. Four cents of that would be for the schools, six cents would be for everything else that I just talked about, affordable housing, West Main, Belmont Bridge, et cetera, right? If we did a seventy five million dollar project, we would need a twelve cent increase in the property tax, six for schools, six for everything else. We did a one hundred million dollar project, which we've all said is not affordable for this reason. It would require fourteen cent increase in the property tax, eight cents for the schools, six cents for the rest of the CIP. On, put this in context, Charleston's property taxes are currently ninety five cents for one hundred dollars of assessed value. The state average is a dollar oh four. So we are below the state average and we're also a good bit below a lot of our peer cities. The city manager is working on some of those comparisons. There's no such thing as an apples to apples comparison between different cities. But a lot of the cities in Virginia are up at one ten to one twenty, right? So the other problem here is that if we did a project of this size, even at the fifty million, it temporarily maxes out our debt capacity. Now, one of the questions I think we need to clarify with this, with the city manager and the city council is, but how long are we talking about? How long is it maxed out? Because you have to, you have to start paying off your old debt and take that off the books until you can increase your debt capacity again and take on something else. So I think, I think that's missing in the conversation right now is how long are we talking about? Two years? Are we talking about five years? Because that makes a big difference. And then that's important because more of your operating funds are going to service debt. That means they're not going to programs. They're not going to giving people races. They're not going to other very important things that we have in the city and in the school system. So that, that's the context on, on the money. So what I would leave you with is that if you focus on just what the schools need for school facilities, the amount of real estate tax required in phase one to achieve reconfiguration and improve the overall quality of the facilities at Buford and have an acceptable temporary condition for pre K at Walker is about a nickel. A nickel for our schools needs to be, needs to be the message because the, the whole tax increase is not just for the schools, but for everything we wanted to. So a nickel is kind of what, what it takes. That's on the table right now. Overall, in the long term, I showed you these graphs in, in, in May at short pump. The problem that we have is that we're just not used to investing in school facilities. We invest a lot in our schools. Our, our, our cost per student is, is one of the highest in the state. That's a great thing. We provide a lot of programs. Tim likes to say, we, we fight above our weight. You know, we, we provide the programs of a much bigger sized city than we are. But we're just not used to doing it. So you can see on the left there is our current FY twenty two CIP program. That light blue color is education. In the middle, that's the five year CIP. That's what we use for our planning for our debt service. When you add that fifty million dollar placeholder, you can see education goes from thirteen percent of the pie to forty one percent of the pie. And this is why we're having such a hard time with this issue right now. And then historically, if you take our current FY twenty two and take out the elementary school modernizations that we're doing, you know, we're going to McClark, Jackson Byer, early Miranda summer, those are one point two five million dollars. Then traditionally, we're only putting about nine percent towards education. And ultimately, as a city, I believe we have to increase that, that percentage long term to be able to do all the things we want to do in our facilities. Because it's not just Buford and Walker, but there's other places above it. They're going to need some help. So finally, with schedule, I'll, I'll close with this. You've seen these slides. This, we, you know, we are two thirds of the way through a process that started in two thousand and eight when we first started talking about reconfiguration. It was a school board decision at the very beginning of twenty eleven that said, let's reconfigure, let's get fifth back down and we'll have pre K through five at elementary schools and we'll have six, seven, and eight at Buford. This was because enrollment had been declining at about one percent a year for, for decades. Well, enrollments started going back up. We kind of had to look at our plans again. The school board in the end of twenty eighteen, is that right? Made another decision and said, all right, we, we confirm, we, we reaffirm our decision to reconfigure and get six up and fifth back down. But now, in order to make room for fifth, we're going to take the pre K out and do a dedicated pre K center. Because enrollment's going up. Since then, enrollment has actually gone back down, and that's even before the thirteen percent drop we saw with people pulling their kids out last year during COVID. So it's now been eleven years since the first of those two school board decisions. And we are in a process now that's already been delayed a year because of the pandemic. This is, the yellow line is where we are right now. We're in the middle of this conceptual phase idea. And the focus is this first little phase here where we have two decisions. One in October and then one again in March. And our whole goal here is to see, understand what it could cost and see if we can move forward on this thing and get going, right? So again, the yellow line is where we are in the schedule. Right now, our direction is to look at three different ways in which we can spend sixty million dollars at Buford and, and show those to the community. We are sending that information. We are working on that right now. We will send that information to the cost estimator next Friday and then get it back a week later and share it as soon as we have it. We are also working on a, a plan for that temporary condition at Walker. And then we're looking at two different ways in which we can design a future standalone pre K building at Walker so we can begin to price that. All this is leading up to an information and action item decisions by this board and by city council in October. At that point, we're only saying, all we're looking to approve at that point is say, all right, this, this is the budget and this should be the general scope. Do this amount of work for this amount of money. Go figure it out some more. That's all, all we're looking to get approved. And then in March, after we figured it out more and we have more accurate pricing, done more community engagement, gotten more buy-in on it, understand really what it is, what it looks like, then the question, then that's the real decision point. Go forward or, or cancel. Don't do it. So these are all of the scheduled dates. I won't go into the detail here, but these are just the different board meetings and city council meetings leading up there. If I zoom in on it a little bit, it looks like this. So the red arrows are the school board items. So on September second, we will come back and present where we are with the new call assessments and the new schemes. We've asked, asked you guys to have a special school board meeting on the twenty third of September so we could do a information item. The reason we have picked that date is the twenty fourth is our deadline to send information to the city clerk. So because the city council requires it a week in advance before they can see it as an information item on the fourth of October. Then your regular October meeting, there can be an action item vote. Again, all, all we're voting on there is this should be the scope of work and we think we should be spending this amount of money. City council, what do you think? So this is my last slide. Just in summary, a few points here, you know, we've been talking about this for thirteen years. This is a, a long conversation we've had about this and it's time to either kind of do something about it or not. And as I showed you with the numbers, you can't outweigh inflation. It's not possible, right? We're talking about sixty million dollars right now at four percent inflation. Sixty million turns to seventy million in four years. 60 million turns to 70 million in four years. So there's, there's a price to inaction. But we know that we can do this together. I think we've seen it in the work we've done over the last three or four months. And I think we can do this now. And that concludes what I have.
A nickel for our schools.
A nickel for our schools.
Thank you so much. I, I don't know. Kim, did you want to?
Yes.
So we may have questions.
There may be questions for WIC. There is a second part to this agenda item, if you will, a piggyback item that's about the piggy bank to, to pay for all of this. So would you, if you'd like, I can talk about that and then you can have questions at the end or if you'd like to ask your questions of WIC now. The item that I have is really about funding and an opportunity that was, or concept that you actually started talking about at the retreat in May. But there's some additional information posted on this agenda item. Would you like for me to talk about that now and then hold all questions to the end?
I think it's very different than this conversation with Mr. Knapp.
I thought so as well. So we'll just pause here for questions for WIC if that's the board's pleasure.
I, I just think it's very, like, I think the advocacy portion, portion of this is kind of an individual discussion and I don't want to, like, he's our architect, like, that's a consultant, but he's not advocating. I mean, advocate your own, in your own way, but I just want to separate the two as best as possible, if you don't mind. Unless you think we should put it all together.
I will say tonight, as long as, I need to, to answer any questions, so.
Thank you, as usual.
All right. So we'll start down with Dr. Kraft. If you have any questions or comments for Mr. Knapp.
I think it's more just a reflection and an appreciation, first of all, for your team and your commitment to doing a community-informed, community-involved process, which is, I'm realizing this is, it's really hard and it's really complicated to try to do this. But I think it's the right thing to do. And I don't have questions, but I just want to say that, you know, I think it is time for, for Charlottesville to do this. It is time for Charlottesville to prioritize our schools. And it's a crucial part of the equity work that not only our school division has to do, but the entire community has to do. So it's really important that the community comes forward to support a meaningful reconfiguration process. And yeah, that's it.
I don't have any other comments. I just, I liked it. You all are bringing in the peer facilitators or engagers.
Peer engagers.
Engagers, yeah. I think it's important that we make sure we get a wide breadth of input as we move forward. Great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you so much for all the work that you're doing. I just really think that this is an important and vital presentation for the public to see. We're always just trying to be as transparent as possible when, and trying to hit as many opportunities to bring all of this information to the public. And yeah, so I, I think it's important. I think the most, the thing that's been kind of pulling at me a little bit, and I, sorry, I haven't discussed this with you, so I'm not trying to put you on the spot. But I would love to see a slightly more inclusive CDT. You know what I mean? I mean, I just feel like, I don't know how to gain advocacy for this program or for this investment, which, you know, I think there's many of us who believe that this is a critical investment, supports equity, will support our middle school students over the generations. And I feel like we're not doing a good job of selling it. And I guess that's why, goes to the next thing. But I also think that it would be helpful to kind of have on the ground people supporting our messages. You know what I mean? From the CDT point of view. And I guess I just see that as something that I would love to hear more ideas about from the public and from our team here. But I, and so I'm not asking you any questions. I don't think that's on VMBO. I think that we need to just start engaging better with the public about it. That's my commitment.
Well, it's, it's on all of us. And I think summer's hard. So you recall when we first started the process, we, we showed you the calendar.
Yeah.
And then we said, you know, this is aggressive, you know? It's like, yeah, we've been, we've been talking about it for 13 years. But now, wow, that's really fast, right? But we all said we should, we should get on it. We need to, we need to get the estimates. We need to get the cost data. We need to have the information. So it's our hope that, that as people come back from vacations, that this conversation is going to be more robust. We're still looking to plan a lot of outreach around back to school. We want all of the back-to-school events to have some type of flyers or handouts that have FAQs about the process and where we are. So I, I, I think engagement's just going to go, keep going up and up. But we, we can always have more people. We can always be more diverse and we, and we want to. And of course, it's also important to remember that every single meeting has been in public. When we formed the CDT, one of the concerns was, well, if we do all these Zoom meetings, are we going to get Zoom bombed by people? And that hasn't happened. All the meetings have been wide open. And we've taken, we haven't restricted input just to CDT members. So if you come to the meeting and have something to say and want to raise your hand at any point, we're, we're answering and we're dealing with that. So we just got to get more people in.
So this process is happening now and it'll continue to happen. And if you, so this is not a time to say, oh, this process is done. This is the time and will continue to be the time to engage with the community design team, VMBO, your principal, just around this information and around reconfiguration generally. I think this is, this will be, the, the next six months will be very important. And your voice is, matters in this process and we're hoping to hear it. So thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
Thank you for the great work your firm is doing. When I look at, I'm thinking 13 years, we've been talking about reconfiguration. I think now it's time to add, we've got to, and you're doing a great job. And we will continue hopefully to engage our community, especially those of us who are seniors in the community. Who don't have, I mean, I have another 13 years. So we need to get this off and running. We've got to hopefully encourage city council to look at all options on the table in terms of funding. We have to also think about our senior citizens when you talk about raising taxes. Those of us who are on fixed income. So there are a lot of things involved in getting, especially getting the young people involved in this process. I think that's a good thing because they're the ones who are going to be benefiting from these buildings and teachers. So there's a lot going on. And I think hopefully city council is listening so we can move forward with this project. It's been discussed for 13 years. It's now time for action.
I think it's wonderful that you have selected your first ambassador slash intern and that they are a Charlottesville High School alum. There's no one around this table that is not committed to reconfiguration. I think what we have done and we have continued to do, whether you are new around this table or not, is advocate for buildings that represent the type of education that we want our students to be. Yes, we spend a lot of money per pupil on students for academic outcome. But where those academics take place are substandard and subpar. If the appropriation of $60 million has been made and the committee has made decisions about how to spend it, we need to begin to do the work in order to spend it. Because every time you wait, it goes up. And you say it will go up 4%, we have no way of knowing. It could go up 8%. And so I think in looking at five cents for a building or five cents for a student, or however you want to look at that nickel, is it worth that investment? In my mind, it is. Everyone sitting at this table has been elected by members of the Charlottesville city community to represent their children and do the best by their children that they can. We hire people to do that work. Those individuals are unable to do that work if they are in substandard, subpar conditions. None of us, including you, can do what you do for the rest of your life. So it is our responsibility to educate young people to do those things. And they cannot do them in subpar, substandard conditions. So we, as a community, must make a decision to be committed to eliminate, alleviate, eradicate, whatever eight you need to do to no longer have subpar, substandard conditions.
I wanted to thank you for coming. Can everyone hear me? I feel like I'm yelling. Oh, sorry. Okay. Okay. So as the newest member of the board, I supported, you know, the reconfiguration. But I, I'm new to it. So it's taken me a little while to catch up. And I guess what is helpful in this process is you showing us the graphics of how much we're investing in our school buildings. Because, you know, I am the product of Richmond Public Schools. So I remember being in schools that were subpar with no air conditioning or no heat. And so sometimes when we're talking about this, I'm thinking about, oh, what are the reading levels? Like, what, what's going on with graduation rates? Is this 60 million, is it good to spend it here? And I guess the way education is talked about and the way it's centered in our budget, it, it seems like things fall by the wayside and they have to be, you know, at a very subpar level to get addressed. So when you're showing these graphics about how much we actually invest in school improvement and how it's just building up over time, you know, it, it's, I support a reconfiguration, but it's moved me personally because we see all these other projects that are getting funded and we're talking about, oh, we're going to do a parking garage. Well, we signed a contract however many years ago to, you know, say that, you know, we're going to keep this promise. But, you know, looking at these graphs, I'm just wondering, like, when are we going to keep the promises to the students? There are academic challenges. There's teacher pay in Virginia being, you know, like the 50th. And the buildings need work. All of those things need to be addressed. And so as a board, and as a member of the board, I, you know, I fully support this. I'm advocating for it because kids need awesome education and they need to be in buildings that they see reflect how important we think their education is. And the same way as a city, we hem and haw over, you know, are we going to build a parking garage? Because we promised it. We have commitments in the community to the kids in our schools. And I think that they should be at the top. So I think reconfiguration, teacher pay and all the other things that we need, it's, we, we've let it go too long. So of course it's going to seem like a heavy lift now. But that's the work that we have to do. So a nickel for the schools with the city getting, I believe, when you do the nickel one, the city got more of that. I, I don't think that this is unreasonable to ask at the bare minimum for the students because, you know, all of the buildings need work. So this is really just the start. There's part of me that's like, if we do this now, when will we get funding for the other improvements? But we are here to advocate for the kids in the building. So I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lashandra.
It's, you know, the, I, I don't want in any way to leave, have the message that the other things that the city is committed to and wants to do are not important. Because they are. Affordable housing is incredibly important. The West Main project is important. You know, Councilor Snell talked about how that's this generation's downtown mall project. And there's, there's money that we would lose, matching money from the state if we walked away from that project. So when I say it's a nickel, I just want to be able to clarify because the CIP does a lot. That 10 cents is for the whole CIP. All those projects are important and the city councilors have tough decisions to make. But for this board and for the schools, we should focus on what the schools need. And that is that five cents for what we're talking about for $60 million.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for your comments. I do want to just reiterate some of the points. So again, how long, like several board members have said, how long we have been talking about this? And there were some comments made and some work sessions recently. And I do want to express my gratitude to council, to those who are on our working group who are advocating and trying to, you know, bring the other councilors up to speed. And this is some of the challenges, is trying to make sure that everybody is getting accurate material or information and that it is being presented in a transparent way. And I think more recently, you know, just to get the clarity around how that 10 cents is, is broken out was very enlightening for all of us. But I, I think that's an important part that this community does see and hear. And again, to Lashandra's point, I mean, again, this has been on the books for so long. And again, as a city, historically, one of the councilors have said, you know, that we, we have projects and historically, they just, they, we don't complete them. And, and it's time. I mean, this community needs to, to step up. We need to make our voices heard, reach out to your councilors, reach out to us, ask questions. But it, it's time to see this through for our community and for our students. And then also, I want to make sure that as far as involvement with this CDT and this process, that it is, it is not solely for current parents or families. I mean, everybody in the community. I mean, we want to hear from you. And whether you have potential grandkids coming up through the schools, you, you're an alumni of the schools. I mean, you, your voice is, is necessary and it's important. So please check out the website, check out the schedule of, of when you can join via Zoom to participate because, but it is important. So we do support this. Again, I also want to make clear that the working group, and we are working with city council and the city manager to try and look at other options for funding through the general assembly, looking at a special sales tax. And there is some potential legislation that Delegate Hudson is working on. So we, we are actively pursuing those as well. So I don't want people to think that we're just sitting and, and sitting around and waiting for, you know, the money that we are grateful that the city is going to invest and, and, and give to us for this project. So we are looking at other options. We appreciate the voices and, and those people who have momentum and have contacts in the community as far as looking at that as well. And, and we have, thank you. This presentation again was wonderful, getting everybody up to speed. And I'm so appreciative of, of what you're doing with and for the schools. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I remain really optimistic about this. I keep using the number four. We've been at this four months. Look, look what we've done already. Look how far we've advanced this conversation in four months. So I, I know we can do this. We've just got to keep at it. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for the coffee.
I'll bring coffee for everybody next time.
Kim, I would like to make a motion that we amend the agenda, that we do, that we postpone our discussion on committee, this proposed funding committee for now. Thank you. I'm proposing that we do not discuss this funding committee concept brief yet. And I just feel like we have a couple other questions and we're not quite ready to bring that to the board yet. That was just part of, if you look on the part of the.
Part of 9.2. Any, any discussion or question? Any discussion or questions?
I would support postponing it a little bit. It seems like maybe there need to be some additional conversations. And I think it's important that we all are really ready for this topic because it's very important, actually, really crucial to accomplishing our goals.
We definitely need to make sure we get it right, but we also need to kind of make sure we get it done. So I think we have a lot of meetings in the next little while. So I'm hoping that in the next 10 days or so, we can get it hammered out.
Everybody okay with that? Any other questions, discussion? All right. Who needs to vote on that?
I don't think so. It's just part of this. We've already formed a slate, so I just.
Okay.
What was the next item?
All right. Next, we have bus driver update from Ms. Powell. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Henderson. So unfortunately, we could not have a representative from City Transit with us this evening. But Garland Williams, the Director of City Transit, did provide written responses to many questions that were sent in advance of the meeting earlier this week. The questions and the responses are posted now and available to the public as part of the agenda. But I'm gonna highlight different aspects of the, of this document for everyone, for the public. So the first question, how many drivers do we currently have employed for people in both full-time and the part-time relief positions?
Hey, so, Kim, I feel like we need to start a little bit at the beginning. I know that we have been talking about this ad nauseam, but I feel like our community doesn't know how hard, you know, that, how we got here. And it can be very brief, but I just feel like it might be very helpful for the public to understand the advocacy efforts that we've made to try to get to this point.
Not a problem. So most of the community that's been following education know that we, you know, we had challenges in the spring when we did decide to reopen for in-person. We had to work through a very challenging waitlist process that fortunately was largely resolved in three weeks or so with the help of community partners and then just everything else. It was a lot. Don't want to talk about that too much, but we wanted to get ahead of that. We very much wanted to get ahead of that for the fall. So beginning at the school board retreat, your board retreat in May, we discussed this actually as part of our ARPA funds and discussed this as a priority to try to get ahead of it for the fall. Communication started within that week with the city, with different ideas being passed back and forth. A lot of this has been covered in the media. And so this agenda item tonight is to provide an update on where we are now with the status. And so I don't know if that's a sufficient, there's a lot that's been going on in this area.
Well, we have proposed, like, I guess the, what we decided on in July or whenever was that we would, that.
Well, actually, at the board retreat, we advanced a proposal.
What we ended up getting.
Oh, yes. So the, we had, we advanced a proposal. The school board chair sent a letter very soon after the retreat at the end of May proposing a certain dollar figure that we would earmark to, to help the city recruit and retain drivers. And in July, we started to get traction. And of course, the council needs to hear things as an information item and then they take action. And towards the latter part of July, and apologies because I don't remember the date, but there was council action that authorized a bonus, which is $2,400 in total, paid in three segments. So if you are a full-time driver and you come onboard in the fall, there's a certain point early in the year where you get $800, I believe. And there's another milestone in the middle of the year around the holidays and then the final payments at the end of the year. So that's nice. And then they also, and this is a discussion that's been going on for a very long time. They have made it possible for pupil drivers to become eligible for full-time benefits with the city. And that's very important because that means they get a greater contribution towards their health insurance and things like that, and it makes it more affordable. So those were really big steps. And then, and this is one of the responses to the questions. They are now getting underway with a big media push because, to advertise and promote the enhanced compensation for the drivers. So all of these things are underway. Now, all of that said, the start of school is approaching us like a fast-moving bus. And so the purpose tonight really for this agenda item is to help you all and the public understand where we are with those efforts as far as getting all of our students to school and what we think that looks like at this point. So again, I'm very sorry that Mr. Williams couldn't be with here, with us here this evening. He had a family obligation that he could not, could not miss and certainly very understandable. But I'm happy to share the, summarize, I'm not gonna read everything word for word again for the public. All of the questions and the responses are now posted with this agenda item online. Okay, so we're now at 12 drivers employed as full-time or regular drivers. But of those 12, 10 are available because one is on an indefinite medical leave and the other one is a new hire who's in training. So as of today, we're at 10. There are three relief drivers. They, they can play an important role in helping to balance the equation of supply and demand, but they don't, they don't drive, they don't drive every day or they're not available to drive the AM and the PM. So what does this mean, given that in this moment, we still have a very limited number of drivers available to us or that are committed as full-time pupil drivers? I'm gonna skip over number two because I kind of just addressed that where they are with the one, one person they have in progress. For routes, right now, they are at 13 elementary routes. And by comparison, we were at 14 elementary, we were at 14 elementary routes in the spring. But before COVID, which is really where we want to get back to, or even better, to be honest, because let's face it, we were, we had overcrowded buses before COVID. And we weren't in, we were not in an ideal situation before the pandemic. But just for reference, and this is part of the response to question five, we had 20 elementary routes. So I will say this, I believe a lot of our families and part of it is a great community spirit we have in Charlottesville. A lot of folks are saying, if I don't absolutely have to have the bus, they're making other arrangements and we sincerely appreciate that. This is not part of the document, but I will tell you that, you know, we were transporting over 2,000 students before COVID. And the last time that I had a conversation with the pupil office, we, based on who was being transported in the spring and the families that we had been notified wanted or needed transportation. At one point earlier in July, we had everyone routed and we were around 1,000 plus at that point. The concern is how many families do we not know about that they haven't actually overtly expressed that they need transportation? And how will those numbers compare with how we bring additional drivers online? I'm sorry, I'm going a little off script here, but I think that those are kind of the big key points that people need to understand. So moving on, I think question number five is a really important one. Again, it's kind of a comparison of pre-COVID with where we are, where we were in the spring. And then that kind of gives you an idea of what we need to get back to as a minimum. And again, we really want to do better than we were doing before COVID and fill our full complement of driver positions because of the bus overcrowding. Actually, not so well.
Question is related to the Buford route? Because there are so few of them. And so you have 13 elementary routes and you have nine middle school routes, which I guess assumes both Walker and Buford. But then if you look at question five, you have 20 middle school routes. And, and only 20, it's like, so why is the emphasis and priority at the elementary when Buford and Walker? I don't understand that. And maybe, you know, so that's just.
So I can give you, I will, I can only answer that as best as I can, not actually be in the transportation. And I'll be happy to note follow-up items. In fact, Dr. Baptist, if you can help me with any follow-up questions, I'll get those to transportation and get those answers back to you. But here's what I'll say, they're routing right now, this, to start the process. They routed based on who was being transported in the spring. They did, we did the great advancement for all the students. They looked at who's still with us, what great, what school are they going to now? And if they said they absolutely had to have transportation in the spring, we assumed that was gonna be the same for the summer unless we got better, you know, unless we've gotten subsequent better information. And then behind that came all the work Beth Chuck has been doing, trying to, you know, get families to tell us, please tell us if you need transportation. And at one point in July, we had roughly balanced that equation to the best of my knowledge. Every student that transportation was working with, based on the spring and based on the information we had from families through, maybe say the end of June, that, that was worked out. That has a lot to do probably with how these routes were initially built. One of the things I will say is that, if you jump to the end, because if you've been following the media, I've been making this comment publicly. CAT drivers were a big part of balancing the equation for us before COVID. They've got to be a big part of balancing the equation for us now in the early stages until all these other fruits pay off. You know, all these other initiatives hopefully pay off and bear fruit, I should say. By that, I mean the improved compensation, the advertising, until pupil can actually hire all the drivers that it needs to fulfill the obligation to the schools, we really do need to continue relying on the CAT drivers more than ever to fill the gaps. And again, that's nothing new. That was a big part of balancing the equation before COVID. That conversation seems to be opening up. And in question number eight, you, you see a summary of the number of CAT drivers who have stepped forward and said that they're willing to drive. And these are drivers that are a combination of drivers who are already credentialed to drive for pupil because again, pupil does require an additional endorsement on the CDL. And I was also really pleased to see in this comment that there are additional drivers who've expressed a willingness to get the S endorsement to become part of that complement of drivers in CAT that could, that could help in pupil. So that's very exciting. The question that I had, and I just received this at 4 o'clock this afternoon. So the question that I have now, is one of my follow-up questions, is how quickly will these CAT drivers that are now emerging as available to support us? How, now how quickly can the routing and all of that catch up to make use of all available resources to get our kids to school that need the transportation? And frankly, even our families who, who, who have made it work, but it's been really hard and we've, we've, we've been hearing that. We all appreciate team players.
Kids who were virtual last spring. I mean, and then we only had kids who were going two days a week at high school and are gonna be always five days a week. I mean, we have a very different scenario.
All of that, right. We are, one of my biggest concerns is that we don't know our true demand yet. And one thing that the public does have to be aware, and Beth Chuck has been messaging this a lot, we can't route you if we don't know you need the bus. And routing does not happen overnight. It's a very labor-intensive process made more so by COVID because we have this fun assigned seating thing that we have to do. And we also have to make every effort to seat same household together. Now, I will say that in order for us to maximize our bus capacity, we are using layered mitigation. We are doing some level of sanitation between the tiers, which is gonna involve wiping down the handrails. And I say we like on the bus driver. I praise our bus drivers for doing all of this. They're gonna hit the high-touch areas on the seats. You know how it's hard to walk down a bus aisle without getting those seat corners right? But they're not gonna clean the whole seats between tiers because we're trying to buy back some much-needed time. We're gonna have the windows set at a certain height, I believe, whatever the report said, 1 inches or 3 inches. I forget, but they're gonna be fixed and set at that level. No matter what the weather, it's hot or cold to keep that ventilation going. Of course, masks are required. That's still a public transportation mandate from the federal government. But if we can't achieve, as of right now, the way we've loaded the buses, is you could have two students from different households sitting on the same seat. Now, there's, the bus seat's fairly wide. They'll, they'll have a good couple feet between them if they're smaller kids. But otherwise, you're not gonna get 40 kids on a bus. You know, you're gonna get something less than that. Now, we have a lot of siblings. We're gonna mostly, we're gonna do same-household seating whenever we can. But if there are two kids that need the bus and they're not in the same household and we've got a seat for them, that's, that's the way the bus will be set up. And of course, it's assigned seats to support contact tracing if there's a case. Again, I don't like to sit up here and read other people's reports or work, but I'm happy to go over anything. There's a lot of detail in here about the push they're making with the recruiting. And I would also thank you, Lisa, for promoting. And I think it's worth promoting again, the events coming up the next two Saturdays here at CHS, where anyone who has any interest in this opportunity can actually get behind the wheel of what they call a big yellow and, and give it a try and see if you think it could be for you because it's really a great opportunity to work for, with our students. And it can, it's more financially rewarding now than it has been in the past. It's actually quite a good opportunity. And it's a flexible schedule that for some people could be a perfect fit. So that's exciting. That's an exciting event that we hope will accelerate the pace of recruitment. I'm happy to answer questions and take down questions to refer back to transit.
LaShandra?
I just have one quick question. So is our pay for the drivers on par now with Albemarle County?
Okay, thanks. I believe so. So what we did initially at the retreat is we took information we were seeing in the newspaper and we were, we shared that as part of our appeal to sound the alarm and take action quickly. Transit did their own outreach and they, they believe that where they landed is comparable. And so, you know, they have their colleagues and in both the finance department and the, and the transportation departments, if you will. And, and that those discussions were had. And, and so I believe that they feel that they landed in a, in a good spot. I will say, and this came through in an email, I believe, to all of you recently, one thing that I don't think has been addressed that may be worth considering, continuing to push is, as I understand it, Albemarle County does allow driver, the children of drivers to ride the bus with them. And there's an email you received recently that mentioned that as a possible incentive because it can make it easier for some folks to drive. I believe Albemarle finds that very valuable. And to my knowledge, Charlottesville has not made a step in that direction yet. And that is something that has been discussed and proposed before. And I don't know how much, you know, more helpful I could be.
Is that a decision of the city?
That is a decision of the city. The city carries the insurance on the buses. That's a risk program under the city. So that will be, that would be a city decision. But it is doable in the state of Virginia. I just want you to know that because I believe the email kind of referenced that it might take some special approval. It's between the locality and probably their insurance carrier to some extent. But it's certainly something that can be done. I would liken it to some of the provisions we made in the, you know, in the heart of the pandemic when we had staff coming in to teach from their classroom because of maybe not having great internet access at home. And they might need to bring their child with them because their child couldn't be in school. We just would have a waiver that the, that the employee would sign and taking responsibility. And then that, that was all our insurance carrier required. Granted, that's a classroom versus a school bus, but there is definitely precedence for that. And there's precedence next door that that is doable.
I have a question. This is a great summary. But my concern is, for those parents who may not be in tune, community members may not be watching us live. And if we're out and about in the community, what would be our response if you have a parent or community member coming up to us and saying, aren't there gonna be enough bus drivers to transport my child to school?
Great question.
At this point in time, what should our response be?
So the first thing I would encourage them to do is make sure they have notified, been in touch with their school, you know, if they haven't, if they're not, if they're intimidated by completing the registration process and indicating it there, they should call the school and let them know, my child, you know. Getting the registration done is one thing. Get on the list at the school that, so that someone there knows they're in need of bus transportation. The, the second thing I would say is this, you know, we can't, I say we again, like I actually do this work, but the pupil transportation office can only route and reroute and create new routes so quickly. In general, it's gonna take about, this is what I'm hearing from them right now. There's gonna be a wave of students that will have transportation on the first day of school around August 25th. And then by September 14th, I'm hopeful that all other students, if they're, to the extent we end up having waitlists and we don't have a great lens on what those waitlists are yet, then I think hopefully by September 14th, with what I'm seeing in this report, which is the first time I've seen these numbers about the CAT drivers that are gonna be available, I would hope that we can very quickly get everyone. I would hope that we can very quickly get everyone else on a bus. Because I think these CAT numbers are very promising. My concerning question for Mr. Williams is how do these CAT numbers translate into additional routes potentially on day one of school? I don't know the answer to that, but I have heard from the people who actually do the routing that they they're anticipating they can do another major rework of routes and everything by the, you know, by the 14th of September. So that's two weeks after the first day.
So follow up to that question. So are they to call the principals of the school?
The school office, yeah, just just call the school office and say, look, I've been following the transportation situation. Maybe I'm having trouble with registration, my stuff, my my information wasn't in Power School back in June, early July, saying I needed the bus. But I want to make sure my student is on a list to get the bus. And we're going to be talking about this with the principals tomorrow about the process forward and how we want them specifically, how we want them handling their wait lists.
It seems like parents could also go to one of these open houses. Perhaps if they're bringing their child, you know, to the school open houses, this might be another opportunity for them to make sure that we know what their needs are.
And we'll have the principals ready. Again, we have a meeting tomorrow morning, but this is one of our agenda items to talk about what this is going to look like to manage through this. And in my mind, between August 25th and September 14th, it may be a little bit messy, but I I think we're going to get there. I'm very encouraged by these numbers of CAT drivers.
One last question. I live right up the street from a bus stop. High school students who attend C H S. And worst case scenario, it's the first day of school. For some reason, the bus has not arrived at a certain time. What do you suggest, you know, community members do?
So that's a good question, too. We are working with Beth Chuck and the new the new person, Amanda, who replaced Chrissy, to set up some social media channels for people transportation so that if a bus is running late, that parents and even students could just go to a Facebook page or, I'm not a great social media person, but Twitter, whatever, and you would know Rose Bus is running 10 minutes late so that people don't think the bus isn't coming. So we're looking to do a lot of things, sorry, I better to improve communication around that. But one of the things we're talking about is what with the principals tomorrow, because we talked about this on our weekly, we have a weekly standing three o'clock transportation meeting. I've had one now, I think, ever since I've been here, but I guess it just started during the pandemic because I can't tell you a week hardly that we take off from having this Thursday, three o'clock meeting. This afternoon, we talked about how we really want to make sure that when the back to school information goes home, and that's when families are going to know for sure whether they've been assigned to a bus because we're trying to allow as much time as possible to work through these things. And you don't want to tell somebody you don't have a bus seat if we can still work it out that they do, right? But we want to, we're talking about how we want to make sure this information about the bus is front and center, right there with who's my teacher or what's my class schedule, you know, so so that it's very clear to a family whether what their status is. Do you have a bus seat? Or did you say you need transportation or you're on a waitlist? Or did you not, or by the way, we don't have you down as needing transportation. You know, we're we're planning how we want that to go out from all the schools and go out in a way that it's really, it really jumps out as part of the key information that families receive when they get their back to school stuff.
Want to mention that Beth sent out an email today regarding the buses and in it to parents, and it says that we still have very limited space and we will continue to have limited space on August 25th, but that schools will try to notify families by August 16th with initial route assignments. And if you are on the waiting list at that point, then you can try to make other arrangements. And I just think it's critically important to let the schools know and, you know, just to reiterate, as soon as possible that you you need to be on that list to try to be on the bus. So if you need to be on the bus, please let your your school know, your child's school know so that because August 16th is actually really soon. So do that sooner rather than later. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever, because that that does, I think, we're going to continue to be doing messaging around buses. And one of the things, now that I have this information and had a chance to read it just before the meeting, we want families to start thinking about if they need transportation, but they've been managing somehow. With the number of CAT drivers I'm seeing, you know, we need to set expectations for, okay, if you don't have transportation on the 25th, I think it might be September 14th, but I need to validate that with with the people transportation team. We need to, I think, just getting a realistic set of expectations out there so that families can plan and manage a quarterly is going to be really important. I think we can do this. It's it's not going to be perfect. I don't think on August 25th, I think that we're a little too late getting the information about all the, you know, getting all the other drivers in play, but that is up to, that's up to the transportation office ultimately to decide. And I, without someone here to speak to that, it's a big follow up question that I have.
Any other questions or comments? Ashonda.
I just have one quick question and maybe we could have more information in another meeting. But since we're anticipating more walking to school and things like that, I did get an email from a parent who was wondering about intersections and kids who are crossing close to Clark. And so I'm just wondering, is there going to be an increase? Like I know the last time we did the walking buses and things like that, I feel like we need an update and like, you know, what are what are we doing at the district and the city to ensure that kids walking, it's going to be more kids. Safe routes and things like that.
So with regard to safe routes, we had the great maps that were put out last year for each school showing the best routes, the safest routes for walking and biking to school. So we have the maps. We are going, we had some success with the walking groups. I think they're called walking school buses and bike trains. We did have some of them formed. We'd love to see more momentum around that for lots of reasons. It's good for, it's just good for community, good for health, good for a lot of things. But we are putting, I've asked Beth and her team to maybe put together a flyer for the schools to help promote the formation of those walking and biking groups and so forth. And then, but the the other piece is crossing guards, which now work for for us. And so we were very fortunate. All but one of the existing crossing guards that we had in the spring did transition over with us. And Jason Lee, you'll have the pleasure of officially meeting him here momentarily. But we're reaching out to make sure that everyone we onboarded from our initial outreach back in June or July, when I met with them in H R, met with them, want to make sure everybody's still on board with us, that they crossed over to us, if you will, and they're planning to work. As soon as we do that, we're working with Kyle Rodland, the city's safest routes to schools coordinator, to take a step back and look at the intersections that we didn't have coverage for last year that we would like to have covered with the crossing guard because we didn't have every spot covered in the spring that we wanted to or that we have had previously when the crossing guards were still under CPB. So now we have to, it seems like my life is a series of prioritizations. We have to now prioritize as we can bring more crossing guards on board, which intersections we're going to cover. And we have a job posting up, lots of advertising needs to happen during this meeting. We have a job posting up for crossing guards and it's, please check it out for people who are working, looking for part time opportunities. It's, it's, you know, just again, that little A M. and P M. Schedule could be perfect for retirees looking for part time work or others who just want that type of a schedule. It's a great way to work with our families and our students. So the posting is up and we're working with Kyle to prioritize what intersections we're going to go back and get crossing guards on and what other ones are are out there that we, you know, still need to put guards on. I can give you some examples off the top of my head. Harris in front of Jackson Via is one that needs, again, I covered Carrie at the back of Greenbrier with two CCS employees that we trained and they have other jobs in operations, but they were kind enough, one took the A M. and one took the P M. I'd like to get an actual crossing guard there. So we were creative. We also, this past year, we did something we hadn't done before. We had crossing guards, if where possible, they would cover an intersection for an elementary school, and then they would hustle over to an intersection for a middle school. And so they they worked a little bit longer hours, but they were able to cover two spots for us. So I'm sure we'll probably continue to have to be creative that way as well. But if if I'm excited about crossing guards because I'm looking forward to hopefully building that out. If someone approaches you in the community and they'd like to see a crossing guard somewhere where there hasn't been one, or they're concerned if their particular crosswalk will still have one, if they've had it before, just email me, please, and we'll we'll put that into our list of what we're considering and prioritizing.
I know we had at least one school board member who who helped out with with the 250 bypass and Locust. And I don't know that we necessarily need a crossing guard there, but I'm wondering even like a flashing light, you know, that would be timed to go in the mornings, you know, and when school is released because there were, there was a steady stream of of parents and grandparents walking kids, you know, so if we're anticipating that again, and I mean, it was just a short duration, but it was enough and and, you know, people don't really watch when they're turning, taking that corner right there at the bridge. And I can speak to having a car come pretty darn close to running me over from the backside, you know, as I was standing out there with my yellow vest on. So, I mean, definitely a light to slow people down. I mean, if we can make that recommendation to the city or so I'm saving you an email.
Yep. Those are the types of things that just make me aware. We we also work with Kyle on lists of road, like improvements for where we would like to see flashers go in. There are cost considerations and there's a process the city has to go through. It goes through the traffic department to get those in. But certainly, we will, we're happy to advocate for those things and push them along as well. And I made a note about Locust and 250.
Any other questions or comments? Everybody good? All right. Thank you. And I am anxious to hear when we can incorporate those CAT CAT drivers who are willing and able, you know, if we can loop them into the routes. Thank you. I agree. All right. So we're moving now to nine point four, which is opening of schools guidance recommendations for COVID-19 prevention. Dr. Beth Baptist, thank you, ma'am.
Hello again. And thinking about the opening of school this year from the COVID standpoint, it's much like we opened school last year from the COVID standpoint. We're still doing many of the same things. And I have just dotted down a list in no particular order. But maintaining ongoing collaboration with communities such as the health department, physicians, other U V A, the discussions about testing that we talked about when Dr. Bonds was here, all of our mitigation that we've had in place, including all of our air ventilation equipment, different filters and things we're continuing to do. Our protocols that we have for all of the different strategies that are on our website are being updated as we speak. Beth Chuck has done a wonderful job on working with those. We are trying to keep up with the changes from CDC, which as we know, can change daily. Bus discussions that Ms. Powell was just talking about. Immunization clinics, we will be having one for the fall athletes so that we'll have them ready. And then once school opens, as Dr. Bonds mentioned, there will be a clinic here at the high school for both the COVID and for the miniature COPO, which is the new vaccine that we need. They also would like to have that Moby clinic set up at one of our football games. So they've asked for our schedule so that they can have that done. And then I'll also try to get Buford and any 12 year olds from Walker included in some of these clinics like we did last year. Those details are still coming. Nurses are continuing to be trained and have the P P E that they need. As we get new employees, first day of new employee orientation, I will try to find out how many I can help get a vaccination clinic. And we will try to get that done during orientation. Just ongoing questions and answers from the administrators. We don't have shop principals. They contact us with lots of questions and I'm, gosh, I hadn't even thought about that. So anyway, continuing to work and learn with them. Monitoring all of our data that we do with looking at Charlottesville data versus our nearby data. Just continuing so much of what we did last year. And as Kim mentioned, the layered mitigation, making sure that we're looking at all different pieces throughout the division. And Dr. Bonds mentioned too, with the tracing, whenever we have a case, we do a very much of collaboration with the health department to work through those cases as quickly as we can so that we can locate any possible exposures as quickly as we can. So those are just some of the things that I thought of just in sitting here that I would recommend, of course, that we continue for this next year. And I don't know that we're really recommending anything new. But we want to just make sure that we're continuing to do everything we can for the the safety of our students and for our employees. I know the next item is to talk about masks and face covering, but I don't know whether you have any questions or issues you would like to address on the opening of school procedures.
I just quickly, I meant to mention this earlier, but this is good timing, too, that there will be a vaccination clinic or vaccination, I guess, a clinic at the back to school event on August 21st. So for those who who can make that or who are planning and registered to show up at that, they will be offering vaccines there as well. And then I know that some some of us have had questions around, and I don't know if this is the time, but just, you know, other localities and what the possibility is or what what would need to happen? Or are we thinking about mandating vaccines for teachers and, you know, where we're heading? I mean, we've had parents and emails asking that as well. I didn't know if you had any thoughts on that.
We had told our employees initially that that is not something that we would require. That was pre Delta. And so we know that things have changed and we don't know what other variants will come. That is something that the the board could recommend or, you know, vote to have happen. And then we would have to either or we would most likely either offer the opportunity to give documentation of the shots or require weekly testing. That's what some other places are doing. I did see on the news this morning that Richmond City employees are going to have something like that in Richmond City schools. They are looking at something like that. So I'm sure all the school divisions are looking at it, but that is something that we could do, but it would take action of the board in order to have the the force behind it.
Any other questions or numbers? Sorry, I kind of jumped in there.
So I have a couple of questions, obviously. I would like to hear more about the the what, the the private companies that are offering tests that we, but I was, I'm on the CDC website right now and they said, so in substantial transmission, it says they recommend that we offer screening testing for students who are not fully vaccinated at least once per week. And it says offer screen testing for teachers and staff who are not fully vaccinated at least once a week. So to me, that means either evidence of a negative test or vaccination. That's what that means in a, in when we are in substantial transmission or orange as we are, which actually it's in moderate, substantial or high. So I would like to propose that we follow these guidelines and that we request either negative tests or a vaccine for all of our staff at a minimum. It says also for high risk sports and activities. Remember, we recommend screening testing twice per week for participants who are in, who are not fully vaccinated. And then it recommended what's for a high risk sports and activity, which would be like we're going over to
contact sports.
Yeah. And recommend screen testing for low and intermediate risk sports at least once per week for participants who are not fully vaccinated. So I feel like a little unprepared to start the school year if we do not have some sort of testing or vaccination regimen, at least a way to monitor this as per the CDC guidelines.
Well, again, we have expressed interest, not said yes or no, but expressed interest in the program that it's federal money that has come to the state. So it would come through the Department of Ed, Department of Health. They will be hiring individual contractors that would come in and actually do the work. When this program first started, it was going to be our nurses, our people, our administrators doing all of it, which at the beginning of S O L testing did not seem like a really good thing to do. But now that program has changed, so contractors, and I've had one contractor that has called me this week and I just have not had a chance. I will try to do that tomorrow to see if this person is indeed part of that program. I don't want to talk to a contractor. This is then going to give us this huge bill. It needs to be one who is going to be through this program. And again, when we first started talking about this, and Ms. Torres may remember better than I, when we first started talking about the testing program, it was in the spring, I guess. Several of the local pediatricians have not really been proponents of what is being proposed now. Some changes have been made, so maybe it would be better, but the pool testing piece that has been talked about doesn't seem to be one that people have liked as much. But I will continue to work with the program and see what we feel like is going to be the best. But I will continue to work with the program and see what we feel like is going to be the best thing for our families and for our students.
Um, I'm sorry, do you, do you know how many of our? Staff are not vaccinated staff that may have some contact with students or in our buildings?
I don't know the exact number. I know when the vaccine first became available, Beth Chuck and I surveyed all staff about. You know, whether they're going to get the vaccine or not. And at that point, we probably had. Two handful of people who were not interested in getting the shot. Now, they may well have changed since then. And one thing I would like to do once we start back is to repeat that survey for all employees. I know the employees who came to the pack to get their shots. I bought that. But any people who went to the. Tent, I don't, I don't know, except for people who just said, I went to the tent. I didn't schedule those appointments, but I did schedule the others. So I don't think it's really that many, but I mean, it, you know, it might be more than we want it to be, but. We will certainly ask again. And I think some people were waiting to kind of see what has happened. And I know a couple off the list did email me this summer and say I have gone back and gotten it. And some of them didn't want to get it because they were pregnant. They wanted to wait until the baby was.
What about new employees?
About what?
New employees.
I'm going to find out. We have new employee orientation this next week. And so that's for teachers on the first day of that, I will ask who do I need to make appointments for? And then for non-teaching staff, I'm going to be working with all of the supervisors of those folks to help me figure out who needs. Vaccination. As you heard Dr. Bond say, they'll bring the bus to us. So we're going to try to get all of the newer employees. And many of our new employees, if they're coming straight out of college, they had to have the vaccine in order to do their student teaching. So the numbers may not be that high.
It would be helpful for the board to give us some direction. Prior. When when teachers came back and we were vaccinating, it was the assumption that we would not be asking teachers. Whether they were going to get, they were, whether they were vaccinated or not. And that was the position that the school division took. It is of my opinion and looking at what CDC and what the state is doing now, that we should be asking teachers. For them to show proof that they've been vaccinated. And if they're not vaccinated, then we should require them to be tested. On a systematic way in order to protect themselves as well as our. Our learners. So we need some direction from the school board to move forward with that.
I'm happy to provide that.
I will make that motion.
Yeah, and I think. Yes, again, we're, you know. We want to protect our employees. We want to protect, protect the students. I think, yeah, we want everybody. So, okay.
And the community.
And the community, yes. And you know, I mean, we need to remember again with the masking and I'm going to beat this thing into the ground, you know, that. You know, proper, you know, wear your masks properly. Do do this, do this well. You know, we don't know if if. Teachers have, you know, young students or young kids at home. We don't know who they're going home to, who they're interacting with. So I mean, again, this is a community thing. It requires all of us. We don't know, you know, as far as our older students. You know, we need to ask you to do this correctly as well. You might have younger students or younger siblings in the house. You might have grandparents in the house. So again, yeah, so I did hear a motion, I believe, from Ms. McBeaver. Mr. Wade, did you have a comment?
Yeah, well. And we're in discussion now. And so I think Jim said that, that there will be systematic testing. What does, what does that mean? Like once a week?
Beth, I guess we would follow the CDC guidelines on on how we would be testing.
And if we're doing this apart from the testing program that VDH and DOE is proposing. Then we'd have to work with the health department or someone to design what what it would look like.
Yeah.
Okay, so the governor is currently asking his state employees to do that. So I feel like there will be some guidance about around that. But you know, like, you know, I, we have like three weeks, like, you know, until September 1st, but I think by September 1st. All of our employees need to be vaccinated. And I leave it up to you all to figure out how to implement. A system where we get evidence of a negative test. At a very regular interval, if not weekly. If they're not. If they're not vaccinated.
So this is an action item that is not on our agenda.
This item is listed as information action.
It's okay, so we're, we're allowed to go ahead and vote on this tonight?
It's gonna be helpful because we need some time to put everything in place.
Sure.
Uh, we need to make sure our teachers are aware of this. And I think that. This, uh, Ms. McKeever is saying around the first of September. So my point is that maybe after Labor Day, this is when it really stops. So we're giving them some time. Almost four weeks to to do this. And then by that time, I think. Baptist, we should have some further information from the state how they're doing that. And we could more or less echo what they're doing as well, so.
Yes, sir.
Um, Jennifer, would you, before we vote, can you read, as they reread the motion? Because it gets hard to hear.
So I I was saying, uh, my motion is that we require tests, we require vaccinations for all employees of the division. In limited circumstances that people are unable to get vaccinated. That they are tested at regular intervals and provide evidence and proof of that testing to their supervisor. To keep our buildings and communities safe. Also want to say, Charlottesville, you guys have done a really good job. You know, you do pass, you have vaccinated at very high rates. Dr. Bonds mentioned it. And I just, you know, we are very grateful because that provides a slight bit of gratitude for starting school. You know, for people like many of us who have young kids who are unable to be vaccinated. So I feel like. We have seen this Delta variant really go high and then go very low very quickly. So I'm hopeful that we can. That this will go away very quickly in a, you know, but I'm not a scientist or doctor. Um, the vaccine is the only way, but you guys have done a really good job and I would like to continue to do that. And to the extent that we are moving something like. The Moby Mobile hasn't come to my community, like tell us so we can reach out to the health department and ask them to come to you. Dr. Bonds said, you know, they really are working to try to get everybody access to the vaccine. And if. There's some hesitancy, talk to your doctor, talk to your neighbor, there are people who. I know that everybody, I think, I mean, I'm, I've been vaccinated, many of my peers have been vaccinated and. Just very grateful to the city and this community for their efforts to try to keep our community safe.
More.
Excuse me?
One more question.
Yes, sir.
What about those individuals who qualify for an exemption? Would they be required to have a medical statement from their primary care doctor? In order to.
I feel like that is really going to be up to Mr. Henderson and his team. I would think so. That is what I believe the governor is requiring. So whatever the governor, the state governor is, I'm sorry, the state requirements are, I think we'll be, we'll be consistent with.
He doesn't want to have a clarifier.
That would be my recommendation.
So those folks, Mr. Bryant, would then be asked or required to just test regularly and provide that?
I I think we would give teachers an option to be tested if that's what they want to do rather than get vaccinated. We would be encouraging vaccination, but they would have the option to be tested. And then if their doc, if their doctor says that they cannot be tested, then then they have to have doctors.
So can we call for the question? There's a motion and a second.
There is. I just, I do want to address quickly though that. You know, there are, and there's been a lot of discussion on on the forum today. There were some great questions about what to do or how to. Support folks who might have questions or have that ongoing hesitancy around the vaccinations. And and to be an advocate and, you know, if you don't feel confident in, in talking through. Why a vaccine might be. The best route to take, you know, reaching out or directing them either to the Blue Ridge Health District or a medical professional who can, who can address that. But I think, again, this is an area where each of us can, can advocate for this. And, and you know, we've heard. That the vaccines are making a huge difference as far as. Symptoms and the severity of those symptoms with the Delta variant. So, you know, for anybody who, who is. Able to be vaccinated is very, very important. So yes, Dr. Kraft, when they call the question, so. All those, unless there's any other questions or discussion, board members, with this motion, are we all clear? All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Henderson. All right, any other questions or Dr. Baptist, we kind of.
I'm up here for the next item anyway.
Well, I do think that we need, you know, I, I hope that parents who do not want to send their kids to school are talking to their principal. You know, about virtual options. I, again, I think there is a increase in anxiety amongst the parents and to the, and if you are needing. Virtual options, please talk to your school's principal.
Return the learn item. I think that, no, that is part, I think that's coming up. All right, any other, was there anything else, Dr. Baptist, regarding this? All right, we're going to roll right into a revision of policy EK, which has to do with masks. Face covering for students, staff and visitors.
I think when we were doing the vaccinations, I got the nickname of the COVID queen. Now with mask, I think my new nickname is the mask czar. Because every time I walk by somebody, they don't have their mask where they're supposed to be. Put your mask up, put your mask up. If you hear me coming, put your mask up. So anyway, we did start Monday morning, bright and early with a universal mask mandate for everybody in the school division. Unless you are eating, you have to have your mask on. If you're in an office totally by yourself, you may take your mask off then. But other than that, we, it's a full universal mask update or our, our policy. And so the policy you have tonight is basically the same policy that you had back in September of 20. I made just a couple of basic editorial changes. Thomas Jefferson is now the Blue Ridge Health District. And I took out any recognition of the governor's order and just kept it with CDC. So we've talked about, you know, starting out the school year with this universal policy. And then we'll just sort of revisit it as necessary or as things change. And we may want to to loosen it at some point, but we'd like to start the school like this.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that back. I mean, my only comment, and you and I spoke briefly about this, and I wanted to bring it to the rest of the board. Was that throughout the policy here, it does reference. As recommendate, recommended by CDC. And and because throughout this entire pandemic, I feel like. So much of. The decision-making was, was kind of from the top, there was guidance, but then ultimately the decisions and what we did with those recommendations. Was hunted to localities. And so I would like us to consider. Somehow changing that language to include that, you know, the localities. I mean, those of us here who have done the work. And and have really tried to look and stay on top of all of that. Guidance from above, but are, have been faced with making these tougher decisions that we do have some say in, and it's not just solely. Based on what the CDC has said. So I don't know what the rest of the board or how you all feel about that.
Would you think possibly in the, into the third paragraph where it says this policy will be enforced until the pandemic? Is determined to be over and mask coverings are no longer mandated by the Charlottesville City School Board?
I feel like until there is a revision in guidance from the CDC, and that is the lead sentence in every of these, in each of these subheadings. Needs to be removed. And then we can add that language at the end.
Well, yeah, we'll take out the CDC part and then, because we're going to follow. Likely what the CDC says, but for this to change, the policy would have to be revised. For us to to reduce, the policy would need to be revised. So this really is based on the action of the Charlottesville School Board.
It is, I mean, and I guess, and maybe.
We need to be able to make that decision.
Right.
Based on the CDC.
I would, I would favor changing that language.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I feel like the CDC, everybody's doing the best they can, but I mean, they're, they're changing. And I think we're, we're. Even being. More cognizant of safety sometimes here.
Well, also.
Community. And we've been asked to do that, so.
It would make it clearer because, you know, there might be some people who would say, oh, the CDC said this, therefore we can. You know, take off the mask, that we would have to make that decision as a board.
So I can go back in and wherever I've referenced is recommended by CDC, change it to as.
You don't even have to say anything, like it says until there is revision. You could just say all students in pre-K, blah, 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 for example, under students. You don't have to start. You just say this policy will be enforced until the pandemic, just like you suggested, until the pandemic is determined to be over. Or not until the pandemic, in until further action by the Charlottesville City School Board or something.
Okay.
And just take out until there is any revision in guidance.
Okay.
They had some pretty disturbing relaxation way too early, especially for children who are not vaccinated. Earlier in the summer.
Here, here.
I would ask you if you would approve this policy now so that we can go ahead and I will make that, that change that you've asked for.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You indicated in several places in this policy, the six feet. Social distancing or physical distancing. We are going to do that. I have no problems with that, but has there not been some talk somewhere about three feet?
We are, and I don't think, have I put six feet in here? We, we're still going to try to social distance in classrooms at least to three feet. Well, I do see six down at the bottom.
Yeah, I see six in several places. So that, so what I'm saying is where we see six, it is six.
If it's.
If we don't see any feet, then we know it's three. Is that the assumption we're making?
I need to go back and carefully look. If it's dealing with something outside, it would be six feet. If it's dealing in a classroom, it can be three feet.
I think it was referencing exceptions or if there was a need for a student or they couldn't tolerate wearing a mask. I think then the, the teacher or employee was trying to then maintain a six-foot physical distance. I think.
Yeah, we will try to do six feet when we can. We know we just can't do it in, in normal classroom operation.
Okay.
Y'all going to vote for this?
I, I will move that we approve this policy with the revision suggested this evening.
Yeah.
Oh, I just had a quick question. When we're talking about the six feet, so we're doing six feet whenever possible, but in the classroom, it's three feet?
Minimum of three feet, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments about this?
Thank you for bringing it back.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for moving quickly on this. All right, all those in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed?
I did see the answer to one of the questions you asked, Dr. Bonds, from the webpage. You asked about the number of zero through nine who had been hospitalized. And the number of 10 through 19 for the Blue Ridge District. They don't report it just by Charlottesville. It was 10 children. Ages zero to nine and 13 children, 11 through 19 hospitalized and zero deaths.
All right. I feel like I need to just stand for like 30 seconds and stretch. I'm going to stand, but we're going to move on to nine point six, which is the 2021, 2022 return to learn update. And I believe we have that, Dr. Odie, and let me.
I am here. Can you hear me?
Hello, wherever you are.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members and Mr. Henderson. This evening, we would like to share with you an update for the fall reopening here in CCS. Leslie, if you could, I don't see the presentation up. Do you have it up? Okay, it's, it's faint on my screen. So here, if you can get to the sum and substance page. Do you have, here we go. Okay. Uh, here you're going to see an overview of what I'll be talking about tonight, moving safely forward. The models of instruction, building upon strengths and continuing the work and next step. the models of instruction, building upon strengths and continuing the work and next steps. Next slide, please. Certainly, the COVID-19 pandemic has had a major impact on this last school year for many of our CCS students and for students around the world. We've worked hard, we've learned a lot, and one day, hopefully, we will look back on this time and truly appreciate the strength that we did not know that we had. But for now, our goal is to move our children forward, to move our schools forward safely, to accelerate learning, to close gaps, to nurture our children, to build relationships, to enrich our children, to ensure that our students are academically, socially and emotionally well in safe school environments. We just heard lots of information tonight from Dr. Baptist, Dr. Bond, sharing information about how we plan to keep our kids safe, and we hold firm to our belief that safety comes first. I just have to repeat, safety comes first, and we will keep safe practices in place so that teaching and learning can take place. Next slide, please. As you know, our main model of instruction for the 2122 school year is in-person learning based on Senate Bill 1303 that you've heard me reference before, that requires us by law to offer in-person learning to all students. The majority of our Charlottesville City School students will be returning to in-person learning five days a week. We believe that in-person instruction is best for most students, given that students miss much more than academics when not in school. For instance, peer relationships, social cues, and so much more. So we will focus on a variety of aspects as we bring kids back to school in person. As you can see here, academics, mental wellness, relationships, all of that. And we will be focusing on VTSS, Virginia Tiered Systems of Supports, as outlined by the Virginia Department of Education. We will be looking at how we can enhance our first instruction, our tier-one instruction to meet the academic, social and emotional needs of all of our students, providing appropriate supports and interventions as needed. Next slide. And we realize that virtual learning worked well for some students. So as you know, we have been planning a CCS virtual model for a select group of students. CCS Virtual Liaison Paula Culver Dickinson has been working to plan the program. We released the application at the end of June, on June 24th, to be exact. And though July 12th was a date given for priority consideration, that application remains open. And in grades three through eight, we have received approximately, this is as of Tuesday of this week, we've received approximately 53 applicants. We also, as the board requested, included in the application that if there were students outside of grades three through eight, specifically in kindergarten through second or nine through 12, to reach out to their schools if they were interested in virtual learning. And we did receive a few inquiries from those grade levels as well. We had one rise in first grade interest and one rise in second grade parent who expressed interest, and they are pursuing home instruction. We do have two high schoolers who will be fully virtual with Virtual Virginia, and that deadline closed on July 16th for Virtual Virginia. Again, we had a small number of applicants overall, and I believe that families just really have confidence in us as a school division, that we will do whatever it takes to keep our kids as safe as possible as we return to in-person learning. We absolutely appreciate our family's trust and confidence in us. Our school administrators worked, who worked with and know the students, have been reviewing the applications that have come in and have been communicating directly with parents to share their decisions based on the draft guidance for successful virtual learning that I shared with you in our June meeting. Administrators considered a variety of of things when making their decisions, such as attendance, engagement, academic performance and mental well-being during the 2021 school year, when we were virtual for most of the year. We did have several parents who withdrew their application after speaking with the administrator. There are a handful of parents that are still in conversation with administration. And again, I just want to stress that we are going to continue to work on these areas listed here, academics, mental wellness, relationships, even in our virtual instruction, and of course, Virginia Tiered Systems of Supports. Next slide, please. On this slide, you'll see the range of applicants and their status, as well as the number of students who have been approved for virtual learning based on their success rate in virtual learning during the 202021 school year. The pie chart on the left shows that we have 30 students who have been approved for virtual instruction, 14 who were not approved. And again, administrators utilize what they know about how the student learned and performed last year to make their decision. In green, you see that eight students had applied for virtual instruction, but after speaking with the administrator, they withdrew their application, so those students will be in person. And then there is one student who is pending further conversation with the parent and the administrator on that chart. These numbers are again, as of Tuesday of this week, August 3rd. On the right, you'll see a bar graph that shows the breakdown by grade level. These are the rising grades. So with rising third grade, we have three students who have been approved for virtual learning, three who have not been approved, and one who withdrew their application. In rising fourth grade, we have one student who was approved and two who have withdrawn their application. In rising fifth grade, we have four students who have been approved, four who were not approved, and two who withdrew their application. In rising sixth grade, we have six who have been approved and two who have withdrawn their application. In rising seventh grade, 10 students who have been approved, one who is pending, and one who withdrew their application. In rising eighth grade, we have six students who have been approved and seven students who were not approved. Again, administrators are still working with some of the parents who have students that were not approved. But please know that the administrators are wanting to ensure that they set the children up for success. So if they know that the student was not successful in virtual instruction last year, it really would not be appropriate, or in the student's best interest, to have that as an option for them again this year. Again, they're following the guidance from the VDOE. Next slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. So as we move forward to begin a new school year here in Charlottesville City Schools, we know that we can come out better and stronger as a result of this pandemic. We learned a lot. We can transform our teaching and our students' learning through our purposeful preparedness, patience, kindness and willingness to be flexible. Together, we will seize the opportunities to improve our pedagogy while letting our students' needs guide us. And we will continue to use tools such as Canvas that we learned and used during the pandemic and during remote instruction as teachers and students transition back to in-person instruction safely. We must build upon our strengths so that we can continue to grow and develop our students. Next slide. Regarding continuing the work and next steps, our principals have been hard at work throughout the summer, getting ready to welcome students back to in-person learning. We have our our student learning and teacher learning opportunities being prepared. The principals are checking on the cleanliness of buildings and making sure that they have everything they need to have a great year. Our CCS Virtual Liaison is working closely with with me, with principals, with coordinators, with staff to ensure that we have a robust virtual instructional program for those students that qualify. Our division staff have been working to provide solid curriculum assessments, training, curriculum overall, supports, everything that principals needs, the principals, teachers and students need to enhance, enrich and accelerate learning. We're going to continue to prepare for safe reopening. As you've heard all throughout the evening, we commit to opening safely for our students, for our in-person students and our virtual students. We will follow CDC and VDOE guidelines and continue to monitor those and adjust as needed. We will continue to focus on relationships. We have to rebuild relationships with students who have not set foot in our buildings for 17 months now, 17 months. So we have a lot of work to do. We're going to focus on mental wellness and academic growth, and we're going to continue on this journey to developing life-ready Charlottesville students, Charlottesville City Schools graduates. We can, we commit to ensuring that every student is on track for success academically, socially and emotionally. Next slide, please. So that concludes my presentation, moving safely forward, models of instruction that we're using, building upon our strengths and continuing the work and next steps. And at this time, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Odie. I'm sure maybe some people have some comments, but I quickly, if you all will allow me, if we could go back, and if you could, in a little bit more detail, just explain the process of denying, I guess, or not approving. I mean, I understand that you say that this was based on prior performance or not a good fit, but I guess I have a concern specifically when I look at a rising third grader or two or three, I mean, to what extent was there an opportunity to to meet with that family one-on-one? I mean, there have to be some pretty compelling reasons. Again, I'm assuming, I don't know, but it it concerns me that that we have, you know, little students and then even rising eighth graders that for whatever reason. And I know we want them to succeed, but I think there's more than just.
Right, we.
They weren't successful last year, so maybe we need to do something a little bit differently for those one or two students. Maybe we need, I don't know. So if you could speak to that, I'd appreciate it, please.
We really wanted to, we have to trust our administrators. We have excellent principals and administrators in our building that have been there observing students in classrooms on the screen last year, talking with teachers, talking with families, trying to engage students. And so when we look at that draft of what's successful, and if, I don't know if if you all recall, I showed charts of that in the last meeting in June of what the VDOE described as what successful virtual instruction looked like. And part of that was attendance. If a child missed 40 or 60 days of school, they didn't log on last year, then we certainly would not want to have that child be in virtual instruction again. If they didn't engage and complete assignments in a timely manner and just did not participate, and this is after teachers. We know that our teachers were in constant communication with families of students that were not engaging, and it's it's a handful. It wasn't all of our students that weren't engaging. We had a large majority of students that did engage, but then we do have those that were not in attendance regularly, were not completing assignments, were not participating in the lesson, did not perform overall well in the virtual environment. And truly, that did perform well when they were in person from from some accounts that I've heard. And so we allowed our principals the sending principle. For instance, a student that was going into fifth grade, Dr. Hastings did not approve or deny. It was the principal that knew the student from fourth grade that made that decision because they were in their building or in their school, and and they were able to know personally how the student performed. So it was not an easy decision, and we know that there are parents that are really struggling with whether or not they want to send their children back. There are a few, but again, we didn't have a large number, so we've, we're excited about the parents that trust what we're going to do for the safety of their children, but we do have this handful. And unfortunately, some of those that applied, the principals did not think they were successful. And I think, didn't think, they just observed that they were not successful last year. And we are charged with teaching and learning, and to put a child who was not successful in virtual instruction through another experience like that is is a hard thing for a principal to do.
I I get, I mean, thank you for that, and and in no way am I not trusting our principals' judgments and, you know, their observations. But what we observed and what we all, you know, went through last year is nothing, you know, we can't compare that to anything. So I guess what I need to know and feel, and again, we're talking about a handful of kids here that I mean, they're basing it on, you know, they didn't, their attendance or whether they completed assignments, but I just need to know if if somebody knocked on that door, you know, and tried to get a sense of, is there something deeper going on that that this family again is requesting that they have that option? I want to know that. I mean, we are all about every learner, right? And meeting them.
We are.
And and we need, I need to know.
Yeah, and and I will tell you that there were cases, a couple of cases where a principal had denied an application, but after talking more with the parent, changed, the principal changed their mind because they they wanted to give that child another chance, and they felt that they could make that work for that child because they were borderline. I think that it was more challenging when when there were more serious academic challenges with the child or mental wellness issues with the child. And I will say, you know, if a principal does, if we do have students, let's say that a principal changes their mind and allows a child to be virtual that was not doing well last year. If the child, according to the VDOE, if we observe a child that we've approved to be virtual, struggling and and not being successful, then we must have that child come back to in-person learning. So, and that was all part of our application process. We asked all of those questions in the form that parents completed and explained that as well.
Thank you, and I do recall that.
A little bit. First of all, there's actually surprised me quite a bit that we have such a small number of of children, of learners, compared to 4,000 students that are enrolled in Charlottesville City Schools. And we have this small number are even thinking about or even applied for virtual learning. And we never closed our virtual learning option. That stayed open and is still staying open. I think our concern for those that were denied, and it wasn't just the principal's decision, it was the teachers talking to the principals and they working collaboratively to make a decision. But what we do know, if if a student had not a very successful year, particularly you get into the middle years, and then they have another bad year, it's going to take three to four years for that child to catch up. And when you get to that point, that child going into high school is probably going to struggle and might be a potential dropout. So what we're looking at is making sure. So what we're looking at is making sure that we continue to work with the parents, even though we've denied some, we will continue to work. It might come down to the point where that we give that child another chance to start over with virtual. But when we made this decision, they weren't on the screen. They chose not to use screen time appropriately. They were not at their screen during the times they were supposed to be. They never turned any work in. So it wasn't something that, it was, you know, the excellency of the work, but really what they were doing, their task at hand. And so what we're trying to do is making sure, and it's our obligation to make sure our learners are successful. And for some, they struggled with this. And we may, we're making an assumption that, and a fairly significant and appropriate assumption that that's probably not the best medium to instruct this particular learner. And so we need to go to a different route. But we're still working with the family. And when it comes down to what we're going to do, we're going to hopefully work together to help their learner succeed. And so, and like I said, some parents have said, no, I want virtual, but they changed their mind. Think right now is that we need to get back to in-person learning because many of our kids are not where they need to be. And we need to make sure that we find ways to accelerate learning and help our kids get back on on a path that's going to help them become great learners.
Thank you. Other board members, I'll turn it over, Ms. McPheever.
So I think that families are requesting virtual for the safety of their family. And so that has to be the priority. Catching up is like really something that I would like to not talk about. We have to meet kids where they are and then go from there. We cannot assume that any, so I just have a lot of issues with, that we have a whole new team at Buford. So it's very difficult for me to say, see 14 denials of Buford students who presumably are trying to either keep their family safe. Maybe they live with immunocompromised, maybe they live with unvaccinated younger siblings. When that team doesn't necessarily know their, that student. And I recognize that we, that, you know, that a lot of, that there may have been some input from teachers or may have been some input. But I think this board has been very clear that we would like to provide an alternative for families who are really concerned about the safety of their family. And that is where, you know, we've been, I've been arguing since, I don't know, since May. But, and that's where my concern lie. I hear what everybody is saying. I hear what Dr. Odie is saying. I hear what Mr. Henderson is saying. I just frankly think that we need to be a lot more expansive and we are, I feel like if we gave them six weeks of like being virtual and let the Delta variant do what it does. We heard Dr. Bonds say the projections are until mid-September, then maybe we, they have an option. Maybe they can come back to school at that point. Maybe we say, hey, you've had six weeks here. You're not doing that great. You're still not showing up. I just would like to have as much grace and openness around the families who are genuinely concerned about the safety of their families.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just would like to clarify, I know that we do have a brand-new Buford team, but those students were looked at by people that knew them. So I don't want there to be thought that the new team that didn't know the students made those decisions.
I think too, I think if it's really a concern about coming into the building and concern strictly because of the virus, then we would definitely look at this. But for some of the ones that we denied, that wasn't really the rationale. It was other reasons. And so I think that, I think we are trying to be very compassionate, trying to work with families. And we're still not at the point when we said denied, conversations are still going on. And we'll be reporting back again at the next board meeting because it continues to fluctuate. Some days it goes up, some days it goes down. But I think we are very compassionate. And if there's some rationale where the family is definitely of feel that the virus is something that potentially could be a significant difference in their lives. And we'll look at that and provide help. For some of these, it wasn't just that. It was just not the right medium to help kids be successful. And so we have to make a decision on learning practices. And this wasn't a good practice for a number of these kids.
I have a question, Dr. Odie.
Yes.
Those students that have been designated next year to be on virtual instruction, whether they're doing well or not, or whether, will they, what is the criteria for monitoring these kids and reevaluating their virtual status?
We are going to be working with, we have again a CCS virtual liaison who will be working closely with principals and the teacher of the students to be sure that we have some progress monitoring, some formative assessments that are taken to ensure the students are being successful. We don't want to wait a whole nine weeks to determine if the child is being successful. We need to do frequent periodic assessments so that we can, just mini checks, so that we can, if a child needs to have a plan written out, a contract is something that the VDOE suggests if a child is not being successful or to bring them back into in-person. We want to be ready to do that sooner rather than later before the child gets too far behind. Did that answer your question, Mr. Bryant?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
I have some comments, and they're not directed toward Dr. Odie. It's just to kind of air the, my grievances. And it feels like just as a division, you know, in the state of Virginia, between the governors, um, you know, we're out of the emergency order, the Senate bill, that we're kind of in a corner. And we were getting to a point in the spring where we were finding a balance between in-person and virtual. And the restraints we're working under now take away a lot of our flexibility. To me, it's maddening and crazy that we can have a bill that requires you to be in the building five days a week for learning, but we don't have a bill mandating that people wear masks. And so we're doing the best that we can. And I know that as a division we are. And I know there are not a lot of virtual applications right now, but if other parents are like me, I have no idea what to do, you know, because it's next two weeks, it could get into a place where more people are frightened. So we're all doing the best that we can as a division. So I just want to thank everyone and just say that keeping our students safe and our faculty safe is getting harder because the people who are in power are not, they're abdicating their responsibility. So we will do the best that we can, but we should be able to pivot to virtual if the need arises in our local community. And so it's just frustrating. So I appreciate the work that everyone's doing, but we can only do so much. We'll do our best to protect our students. We will protect our students and staff, but this is just a frustrating topic.
Well said. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else?
No, I mean, I agree. I think that, you know, I think we just need to do everything we can to have the kids in. But we have to be prepared to pivot to more virtual if we need to. But right now, man, we need to come all for having them in school. You know.
Dr. Kraft, any comments?
Yeah, I too, just generally, Dr. Odie, thank you. But I too, I need to feel like, and I know we've done this, and we've got an incredible staff here at Charlottesville City Schools, but that we are ready to pivot if we need to, because I think things could change. Hopefully, I'll say positive that Delta is going to, you know, stay out of this community and we will do our parts. But I want to know, you know, that we have a plan. And I don't know if that's being discussed at all.
So the good news is, Madam Chair, that we were able to pivot last year, and we've done it if we need to. If for whatever reason we have to go back to virtual instruction for the division, we will be able to pivot to do that. Right now, though, our goal, you know, just to repeat it again, is to get our kids back in the building safely and get in-person teaching and learning done with the majority of our students and having that option for the others. But yes, we will be ready to pivot if and when that time comes.
And I do know, I mean, we are, I imagine there are some parents, and we have received some emails, you know, of parents expressing just concern. And again, I encourage you all to reach out to your principals and ask questions, reach back out to us, ask questions. And we will guide you, you know, to somebody who can give you information if you need more from us because there are a lot of unknowns. So we hear you. And yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have safety model update, Charlottesville City Schools and Charlottesville Police Department protocols by Ms. Powell.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Henderson. I'm excited to share this update with you this evening. And Leslie, would you like for me to navigate the slides from here? Should I do that? Would you like for me to navigate this? You got it? Okay. Okay. So in putting together this presentation, I'm happy to say, for the most part, I was able to just go back to your last update and pull slides and put check marks beside a lot of things. But when I've spoken with you before about this significant change in our model for safety and security for our schools, you know, you have to look at it, in my mind, it falls into three categories, the people in the positions, the training and the communications, and then the systems and relationships that tie it all together. Next slide. So this first slide is everything you saw. It's the exact same slide that you saw from the last update in the spring. And I'm happy to, I'm really happy to see all the check marks here. I'd like to thank our HR department for their good work and helping us fill all these spots and all the administrators who involved in these interviews. We're excited about the team that we have assembled, the care and safety assistants, the social worker and social emotional support counselor positions, the AP position that was restored at CHS. And then one update to the slide in big bold letters, I'm so happy to welcome Mr. Jason Lee. He's here with us this evening, and he'll be joining me in giving some other information later in this presentation. But he has hit the ground running with the CSA team and developing their skills and getting everyone where we want to be when school opens. And we're just, we're so incredibly excited about that. Next slide. So as far as positions, this is new information. We have, we're very grateful that we've been able to add a support pit position to the facility, safety, and operations team in light of all the positions that we're now responsible for with the new model. And this position assists in monitoring campus facility, campus and facility conditions, both with regard to housekeeping and safety, and also assists with supporting the performance of the duties of the custodial teams, crossing guard teams, and the bus aid staff. And here's another advertisement, if you will. We are still looking for crossing guards, at least two additional. That posting is up. And then I'm really excited about this next position. It's a variant on something we've always had. You may be familiar with bus aids. And usually they're IAs that have received a stipend. But it's always a little challenging with the IA schedule because it would mean you have to select someone that it's not really detrimental to the school operations if they're a little late when the bus drops them back off at the elementary school, right after they rode from at least the middle and the high school tiers and so forth. But this is a concept that I talked with Denise Johnson about, and we did a little bit of this with West Haven in the spring. It's, we're calling them community bus aids because we are hoping that there'll be people from the communities where we have these large bus stops, lots of kids getting on the bus. So the bus stop itself can be a little bit chaotic. And in working with the transportation team over the past year, I've learned that that's one of the things that makes our bus drivers really nervous is students coming from all different directions. And they would really, they really welcome another set of eyes. Renee Hoover, our finance director, I don't know if you know this or not, but the finance department, I had all of us, had all of them jumping on buses at the beginning of school to help with the seat assignments and all that because it was all just so new. It was so much for the bus drivers to handle when we started in-person in the spring. And when I presented this to Renee, she was like, oh, I definitely know why we need those after riding the bus in the spring as just for that brief time to help us get started with in-person learning. So these are part-time positions, four hours or less a day. And so these jobs are also posted. And we're really excited. We think it'll not only be, it'll just be a great opportunity to improve bus climate and bus safety and a great opportunity for some, hopefully some folks from our community who want to get involved with us in this way. So next slide, Leslie. So this is just to give everybody some context of how the safety, new safety organization fits into the overall organization. It's been my pleasure. It's been a challenge, but it's also been my pleasure to start bringing, you know, bring this to fruition. And you can just sort of see the new positions there. The care and safety assistants and the head custodians are dotted line to the facility, safety, and operations supervisor, Mr. Lee, because they are still ultimately hired and report day-to-day to their building principal. So it's sort of, it's like I compare it to a PE teacher. A PE teacher isn't, you know, their supervisor is their principal day-to-day, but they're also part of the health and PE department for the whole school division. Both the custodial teams and the care and safety teams have that same type of relationship where they're part of that building community, and that's their direct report supervisor, but they're also part of this division-wide team. So next slide, Leslie. At this point, I want to turn the podium over to Mr. Jason Lee, and he can talk with you more about the care and safety assistance he's been working with so closely. And he's also going to start off the discussion about where we are with training. And then Patrick Farrell is going to come up to the podium as well because Patrick and Jody are just great partners with us in our training and preparations around this new safety model. So.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Mr. Henderson. First, I want to thank you for this opportunity to serve the city in this capacity. I'm very excited and honored to do that. As we begin to prepare to implement the new model, we are focusing on wellness, making sure that we focus on the social, emotional, mental, and physical wellness of our students. And in doing so, we're trying to promote a very positive school culture. And one of the major pieces to that is the role that the care and safety assistants will play. I am pleased with the members that we have assembled to this team. They bring a variety of skills. We also bring background with the students, and many of them have history and have worked and already built positive relationships with our students. So I think we have a one-up with that already. Again, we are, the major role that they're going to play, I'm going to skip all the way down to bullet five, is building positive relationships with the students. This is a focus that's intertwined in a lot of the trainings that we've done. And their job is basically to be visible, to be present, to be knowledgeable, and to be able to assist, be resources to all staff members, our students, and all stakeholders. So we're working hard. Again, some of the roles they will do is regularly monitoring hallways, assisting school administrators, again, with code of conduct issues, with security incidents, but just to be visible. I mean, to be there, to be, again, utilized, and to be a resource for all the stakeholders. And again, most of that is surrounded by the ability to create positive relationships with those stakeholders. You can go to the next slide. So again, we have, I have hit the ground running. I've been in several trainings already, so trainer-trainer situations. Been in contact with Jody and Patrick on, I'm just hearing our trainings. But we focused on a few things to get us started that we thought were really important. A lot of the, again, the trains that we've done, again, around relationship de-escalation and building those relationships with our students. But in particular, this week, starting yesterday, we began our DCJS School Safety and Security Certification program, and we had two sessions, one yesterday, one today, where our CSAs got their certificate as certified school safety officers. Again, a lot of that was intertwined with trauma-informed care, relationships, how to de-escalate, how to intervene with student behaviors, a lot of quality training. Also, school policies and safety recall. Also, school policies and safety recall, protocols, code of conduct, CSS, CCS, and CPD protocols, relevant school board policies, school crisis emergency management, and medical emergency plans. We will, again, dive into a lot of that next week. We have several trainings scheduled for next week. One which will be met, which I, again, received my certification to be a trainer-trainer. So we'll spend two days met. And again, the basis of met, you'll hear me say this again, is relationships and de-escalation. The more we know our students, the more we can, we can relate to our students, the more we can positively affect change in their lives and be there to support them. So a lot of, again, what you will hear from us is, again, creating that, those, that that culture of care where we really focus on the wellness of our students in all facets, again, mentally, socially, emotionally, and physically. So I'll turn it over to Patrick, and he can talk about how we're going to continue to operate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Mr. Henderson. One of the things that came out of the Safety Committee last year, really two things that, especially a lot of the team members and the people who actually worked in the schools, want to make sure that we address with this new model. One is the fact that they, staff members, that need to feel safe just as much as the students felt safe. And they need to feel safe physically, mentally, emotionally, and socially. And so, so there was that piece. And there's also a piece that they didn't want the CSAs to be kind of on an island. Like, like, again, if we're really struggling reading, you'll say a school's doing great because they have great reading specials. They say they're doing great because they have great core instruction in reading. And so for us, it's really important that we address tier-one issues with all of our training. So that, so what the CSA is, all the great training that the Mississippi is providing is layered on top of what the whole school is doing. And we're speaking about common language that we're intentionally building community, that we're repairing community, and that we're sustaining community. And then with individual staff members, we're building skills, we're changing mindset, we're giving them knowledge. And so to give them the tools to build that positive school culture that Mr. Lee was talking about. And so if you want to, the next slide, all those things, again, I'm happy to answer any questions about these specific trainings. But they're all building toward those things about creating that shared knowledge, that shared mindset that we are, have to intentionally build a safe community for ourselves, and that everybody, students and staff, need to feel safe in that environment, and we need to create an environment that allows them to do so. And then the last layer in that is that we're blessed to have a lot of new school mental health professionals that we didn't have last year. And so for us, we're adding an additional layer of training just for that group, just so they also have a shared knowledge base and understanding. So they're not as dependent on individual people's skills, but there is a common theme for all of them. I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the trainings, or any general questions you might have.
Anybody? Thank you. I'm just curious, and I don't know that you guys have the answer to this yet, but with with all of these new positions, which we are so happy to be supportive of and that they're in place, just how are you going to track or report back to us as far as, you know, maybe positive touches or what? I don't know if you put any rubrics together, you know, or or anything like that. I mean, I'd love to get updates, I guess, from how positively, you know, all of these positions are going to impact and support, you know, our students and and our staff.
Well, and I I think how we want to do that is that these are to be grounded in Virginia Tier Systems of Support, which means that, like anything else, we we do instruction, we do tier-one, we take data, we evaluate and how well we're doing. So we we have, like with our social, emotional learning, we have, we have that social, emotional assessment data that we take for our students, both from from pre-K all the way up through grade 12. That lets us know about, are all the things that we're doing, what kind of impacts it's having on the students, especially the students when they self-report it. That was something we did last year, but I think I've shared with the board that was really an eye-opener for us, when we asked the students how they were functioning. And it really differed pretty, pretty significantly from how the teachers thought the students are doing. And that told us that was valuable information that we need to keep on getting to do exactly what you're talking about, to evaluate the the impact and effectiveness of these new positions.
Thank you. And I guess I'd love to hear at some point, once school opens and we get things settled, like what kind of spaces or how how students can access these supports and what what those things look like. So I'd love to hear that at some point.
Happy to do that.
Well, I'm thrilled, actually, to hear about, you know, some of these changes. I think the CSAs are fabulous addition and something that we've really needed. So I guess one of the things that I I think has been a little bit of an issue is sort of consistency and continuity among all schools. And I'm wondering just your thoughts about that, just making sure that what you're trying to accomplish is is really happening in a similar way amongst all of our different schools.
Well, I would say with the, again, the CSAs, we're all trained together. So the CSAs we have will be at Buford, they will be at CHS, and will be at Lugo McGinnis. And so we're all trained together with the same skills, under the same philosophy from the division. And and to go back to the prior question, as far as indicators, I think there are kind of bigger, broader indicators as well as far as attendance and discipline and and results of our climate surveys as well. So wanting to see improvements in that, in those areas, as well as, again, with attendance, again, it's a great indicator of whether a student really feels comfortable, it feels safe in an environment. And so hopefully, we can see some improvements in attendance as well. But as far as consistency, we are all in the, as far as CSAs, we're in the same trainees together. So and again, the same philosophies will be shared.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ashonda?
I don't have a question, just a comment. Thank you all for all the work you all did to get this together for the start of the school year. And thank you for staying this way. So, you know, I appreciate, we all appreciate what you're doing.
My pleasure.
So grateful for for both of these guys. And and there's more in this presentation because, as much as that was, as big a lift as it was to get here, there's a few more elements we want to talk about. But I realized, standing back there, I have to credit Jason for this. He reached out and actually added mediation training in for the CSAs. He has that coming up, which I thought was great. I think that's next, next week?
Yes.
So that's part of the the plan for next week. I've I've just been so grateful to see all the different components come together with fidelity, considering the long list of things that we wanted to get in place. Couldn't do it without Patrick and Jason and certainly Jody as well. So just so appreciative. We're also going to talk a little bit at the end of this presentation about some other metrics we'll be using to kind of gauge the whole model that, so that that's coming up. So moving on to another big piece of the process to get to this point. You have had the CCS, CPD protocols document for about a week or so now. And I, it was my oversight. I did not, I sent it out for, kind of get it to you first. And then I didn't send it to Leslie to get it posted on the agenda right after that, but it's been posted to the agenda now. And of course, it'll be available to the public. But I want to give special thanks to the individuals listed on this slide. These are people who were with us in the original thirty-some-person committee, the Superintendent's Committee, Advisory Committee for Instituting a New Safety Model. These are the individuals that stayed with us to the end, working through this protocols document in a very meaningful way. Each of them brings diverse experience and perspectives to the table. And because of them, that we ended up, I think, with, it's going to be a living document, but I think it is an extremely solid start. And I'm grateful to each of them. It was really many iterations and a lot of back and forth and a lot of comments and responses to comments got us to the document that you received. So special thanks to all of them. It's about a sixteen-page document, I think, with the appendix. There were also members of our administrative team, Dr. Ozari, who was really helpful in helping to flesh out what we needed to make, make it a document that wasn't just about principles and concepts, but also just operational realities that we need to be prepared to address. And so that there's no, you know, no doubt or or confusion if the moment arises of what we need to do in various situations where previously an SRO would have been involved. So just a lot of gratitude for those, those people there. Next slide. So now we're at the slide where I don't have everything checked off. And so I've just got to, got to be real with you here. This is where we are on the home stretch. So the policy review and updates that were relevant have been done. And Dr. Baptist is going to come to the podium here shortly with the one policy that referenced SROs needed to be updated. The Code of Conduct has been revised in light of the new policy. And there's a lot of other updates to the Code of Conduct. That was part of a bigger process. But I personally looked at everything, and it's now harmonized with new model where it needs to be. Our classroom clip charts have all been edited. Julia Green and I just wrapped that up, and Julia's getting that to press. Those are the quick reference charts that are in all the classrooms. Some of those referenced SROs and things like that. So the school crisis, emergency management, and medical response plans. Our normal school calendar, that that is underway now, and the the schools have a couple more weeks to wrap that up. So I can't, I can't give that a check, but it's not off schedule and it's going to be done. So the school's first responder incident report, this is something that came out of the committee that when first responders are called to a school, they want us to have data about that. They want to, they want to know why and that type of thing. So I shared with the committee members, the five who who hung in there with us through the end, working through that protocols document. I shared with them our vision for the elements of that report, but I haven't developed, I haven't got it together into a report yet. But we're going to come up with something that every time first responders come to campus, for whatever reason, medical, whatever, we're going to have a tool that administrators will know they they need to log an entry in there, and it'll be available for, you know, like a dashboard or for public review and comment. So that's another piece. Now, I don't know, because we weren't capturing data the same way before, we won't have a comparative basis, but we'll have something to use to baseline and go forward with. The Handle With Care Program, this is something that Jody and Patrick, Jody in particular brought my attention to it, Jody Murphy, early on. It's a program that if something happens in the community, like an incident, a shooting, or anything that could be traumatic to one of our students, it ensures that we get a heads up without any specifics. It just says so-and-so handle with care. And then the people who need to know in the school, and only those who need to know, they don't, they're just notified and they're, and we're, the whole community learns, you don't go up to the student and you don't say anything to them, but if it looks like they're in distress, if they maybe didn't turn their homework in or something, you just kind of give them a break. You're there. It it helps us better support our students if they've experienced trauma in the community. We want to know. Then we don't need to know details. We just need to know that they might need a little extra support. So it's a very successful program that the state is now actually got a big push around as well. It's in place in Harrisonburg. That's one of the closest communities we know that has it. It originated in West Virginia, but it's spread across the country now. And we're excited to work with our first responder partners to get that in place. But that won't be, that's, that's a partnership. We certainly can't do that alone. And the SROs, that was a role they filled before. So that was part of what they did, is they would, they would, they would inform us when these things happen. So we don't want that to be a communication disconnect now. We need to have a new system to keep that, that value in place. Similarly, we will not have people in our buildings anymore that have walk-to-talkings that tie into E911. So we're evaluating an app that's really commonly used on college campuses, but there are also some K-12 schools in Virginia using it, and then across the country. It's in use in various educational institutions. And it's basically an app that when you're on one of our school campus campuses, it's geo-fenced in the campus. And we give our school maps over to E911, and there are these different button selections. And people who have this app, and it will just be such people, it enables you to do like a push-button type of alert to E911. And when it comes to E911, it tells you where the situation is and what, and what type of situation is. So at least that type, that level of information is communicated quickly. We're just looking at different options to streamline communications because, you know, in evaluating the transition and model, that is one of the things that we will no longer have without having an SRO in the building. So we're, we're working on that and looking at different options. And then the last thing, and this is ongoing, so I don't know that this one, this one get a check mark as done anytime soon. But we're continuing to upgrade and expand our facility security systems. And I will tell you the projects we have underway this summer. Some of those are not going to complete by the end of the summer, as we hoped, because of back orders. We're facing, you know, the auto industry, the construction industry, everything's taking longer if you order a lot of things right now. And certain security equipment's in that vein, but all of the essentials will be in place. And, you know, we'll keep you posted. Access control for CHS, finishing that out, and the Visitor Vestibule Project. The enhancements to our Visitor Vestibule, those things will be fully done, but everything is in process, moving as fast as it can. And we'll keep you updated there. But even at the end of this year, we still have, we're, it's sort of like the general maintenance on the building, as we continue to try to improve and modernize our security systems. And there's a maintenance component. So that's really, it's going to be ongoing, but it's, it's good work. And we're, we're well underway and fully leveraging grants as much as possible. So I think, next slide. Yep, this, so in wrapping this up, it truly does take a village. It's been a partnership to get to this point, and it's going to take a partnership, just like it will with the health and safety of our schools, safety and security also. It's a, it's a partnership among the whole CHS community. It's not just up to the CSAs. It's really all of us together. And one of the things that we are doing is we're telling the principals that for their preschool week, we would like to know, we, there needs to be a dedicated agenda item for safety as as one of their all-staff meetings. And we're going to try between myself and and Jason Lee to, or Pat, Patrick and Jody, we're going to try to make sure, sometimes there may be a conflict. We want to have at least one of us at each of those meetings to help make sure that all staff really understand the new model and how we're working together in, I think, in a great new way to, to make our schools a safe and welcoming environment for everyone. So I'm happy to take questions.
I would just like to say that don't take our lack of questions or comments
Okay.
to mean anything about the importance of this topic to us.
That's okay.
But I will reserve my comments for future meetings. It's just such a lot of work. So thank you. I mean, joint, joint work and a lot, lot of hours. So thank you so much. But any other board members' comments?
Yeah, could I just, I just want to commend you on the the big protocols document. And I I actually read the whole thing, and I thought it was one of the most thoughtful, comprehensive, well-written, well-thought-out documents like that that I've seen. And so I was so impressed with it. We're really fortunate to have something like that now. So thank you for that.
Thank you. And definitely a team effort. I will tell you that Beth padded in my office, and she said, we're already getting calls from LAJC referring other communities to look at what we're doing. We kind of expected that might happen. So.
Yeah, and I'll, there's, I mean, a little nitpicky thing. There's one little error omission that I can share with you.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
So I will do that.
Oh, actually, and I do want to point out, we do need to have this signed by the Chief of Police and Superintendent, interim superintendent. So we have it in effect for the new school year. So it is an info-action item tonight, at least with regard for authorization to execute the protocols document.
I will some move that.
I just had a one quick question. In the document about the initial police contact, I think it's page seven. We're talking about for urgent emergency situations and police talking or meeting with students on campus. Those should be rare. I'm just trying to understand because I don't want it to, I just don't want to make sure that students aren't questioned by police on school premises alone. And so, I mean, I don't want them questioned, but I get it that they're emergency situations. And this one, I was just wondering if you could add some more. That's, you know what I'm trying to say. That's to it because it just seems like that was, that was the only thing that stood out.
So I'm having a little bit of trouble here, but I want to make sure I'm in the right spot. We're on page seven.
On the initial police contact, when it talks about meeting with students or staff on campus, they report to the principal, explain the purpose of the visit. The parents are notified, or there's a guardian. I don't want them questioned alone at school.
Right. And and that's in the document. I believe that the only time a student would be questioned alone, and this would only be with trained professionals, is if there's some reason for the protection of the student. And that's spelled out in here, in, in cases where a stu, the student could be a victim of something that's going on. And it's determined that the safest place to talk with them is the school. But school personnel, in those cases, you, you're, you have people involved who are like from child, uh, Foothills Child Advocacy Center. They would be, social services is another group that could be involved in a situation like that. Or there are, there are some specially trained investigators in the police department that, but they're the specially trained ones. It's really for the protection of the student is the only time that there would ever be contact with an officer that wouldn't have the parent guardian involved. And that's, should be very rare, hopefully never occurs. But I have to say, Ashley Sanali Matthews was on that slide. She is part of the team at Foothills Childhood Advocacy Center. She's also a parent, our school division of the young student, but she was incredibly helpful as we went through this document to make sure that we had the language to cover situations, not just where a student is suspected of doing something wrong, but it's a, it needs to be worded where, to also cover situations where the student is a, is a victim or a potential victim or, or there's a concern of harm to them. And the language needed to cover that too. And so we strive, we definitely tried to do that. So it just make, just keep that in mind. Sometimes you might read something, but it's, it's designed to protect the student either way. And it's, it can sound, it's something that might sound not great to the ear. If you're thinking about the student being suspected of doing something wrong, it actually can make perfect sense if the student is, is in a potential victim situation or potential harm situation.
I believe that's in the policy that Dr. Baptist is, yeah, in the lines of that. Any other questions?
So Dr. Kraft's comment, I don't know how you want to handle that. If, if it's really, if it's really minor, then it probably shouldn't, I just want to make sure it wouldn't be something that we could, shouldn't act this evening.
All right. So we had a motion and we had a second. Any other questions, comments, discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Powell. All right. Next we have policy KNHJ day, relations with law enforcement authorities, Dr. Baptist.
Yes. And this goes directly with what Ms. Powell was just speaking. You had this policy back in June and we said at the time that we may need to change it with the new safety model. And so we do. And so you will see on the policy, some bolded print. And we're asking that that be added into the policy. And this would be an approval item.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question? Well, we're talking about, there's a portion in there where it talks about warrants being served at school. What, what are incidences when warrants are served at school for students?
If they've been charged with some sort of action that wouldn't necessarily be a direct arrest, they might be serving it at school rather, because they would be able to locate them there. We don't want that happening, but it's, we can't always control that piece.
Yeah. What can I add in there? Usually what, in working with the police department, usually they'll call and then we will get the student and move them away from the building into a location that's done privately. It's not open to everybody. And that could be where he's charged for something and they are arresting him. We try to do that outside of the building. We have no, we have no control over that if they're coming in and they have a warrant for his or her arrest. But we do it in a way that it doesn't create
Try to minimize.
minimize attention and interferes with the learning.
And same thing, if it's some sort of document that needs to be given to a teacher or staff member, trying to minimize that or also take it, you know, where everybody in the building is not seeing that be given.
Okay. And maybe it's something to address at the city level. But you know, if you know where a student goes to school, it's probable that you would know where they live. And so to make efforts to serve warrants off, outside of, you know, off of school property. Cause we're, we're putting a lot of effort into making schools into safe places. So that might be a conversation.
We certainly encourage what you're just saying, but we, we cannot control whether it happens.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other discussion, questions? I believe we had a motion. Did we not? I mean, we need to take action on, I believe, the changes. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Dr. Baptist. All right. Next we have American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, and the ESTER three finance use. Doctor, our doctor, doctor, I'm promoting you, Dr. Powell.
Okay. Good evening again. So this is another step in our process of receiving these funds. We need to talk publicly about the use of the funds. We started this process at the retreat, but this evening we wanted to bring it back out as a public item and just, just clarify some things. And there is some new content in here as well. Leslie, you can go to the next slide. So by way of review, we want to remind everyone that the money that we're talking about this evening is this third round of assistance from the federal government. It's the simplest thing, the way we think of it is cares one, cares two, cares three. But what we're talking about this evening is ARPA, it's called ARPA, ARPA or ARPESR three, otherwise known as CARES three. It's the largest appropriation of the three, over $10 million for Charlottesville City Schools. Next slide, Leslie. So again, and this is information that was shared back in May at the retreat. You see the purpose of the ESTER funds. It's really focused primarily on the safe return to in-person instruction and also addressing the academic, social, social, emotional, mental health impacts of the pandemic. At least 20% must be reserved to measure and address the academic impact of lost instructional time on the students. So on the application that we need to submit within the next 30 days or so, we have to designate which of what we're putting into what we're claiming as the learning loss parts of the money and what we're claiming as non-learning loss. And those are actually the terms that are used on the, on the form we'll be filling out for the state. So another piece of accepting these funds, what is our mitigation and health plan? And this is, this was reviewed by you all back in June and we provided opportunities for public comment. And that's also, it's also information that's readily available on our return to learn page. So at this point, I think we can go to the next slide, Leslie. So this again was shared in May and as we, as we shared before, as we stated before, all of the things, the board made a lot of important decisions in the FY22 adopted budget, anticipating that we were going to need to address learning loss and the social, emotional needs of our students as a priority. And at that time, there was some speculation that this additional money would be coming through and, and fortunately it has. So these are, this is the breakdown directly from the FY22 adopted budget. And then when I spoke with you all at the retreat, there was an, we, we had added some money to the transportation line. And, and this is again, just what you saw, no, no changes, but that was kind of the original plan. We'll call it rev one, revision one. Now let's go on to a new slide. So, and Pat, if you can move me down to the bottom right corner of that screen. The winner, so, oh, Leslie, sorry. If you can move the image, sorry. And I don't know if we can get that bar to go away at the top either, but um, this is, this information on this slide really shows the application, the information, the numbers as we're going to break it down on the application. It's actually, there's some weird text wrapping going on up there. But we are going to have 51% of the funds dedicated to addressing learning loss. That's $5,160,361 and 49% in the not learning loss category. And that's truly what it's called on the application, learning loss, not learning loss. Some of the decision about which bucket to put things in is somewhat subjective. For example, the social emotional support counselors could easily fit in the learning loss category as well. But we took the approach of taking the decisions that were made that are more strictly academic recovery and putting those in the learning loss side of the application. Now these numbers here are all based on an assumption that we need to carry these changes for three years on ARPA funds. We certainly hope that's not the case. We, we need to transition off of the one-time money for any of these things that we, that we determine are helpful for students. And we want to continue them in, in, you know, longer than just the next several years. So Leslie, on the next slide. We need to just talk about this again. The, about the dynamics of working with one-time money. So this proposed application is really just in line with what was already adopted in the FY22 school board budget. And there is, there's an amendment pending now for 300 and some odd thousand dollars to support people transportation. You all saw the proposal back in July from Chip Royals, that, that will be part of, you know, our plan moving forward for at least the next two years. The goal of shifting non-recurring ARPA funds to align with non-recurring expenditures, such as capital expenses over the next several years depends on multiple variables. What happens with our state funding going forward? What happens with our local dollars over the next several years for operations? What nondiscretionary cost changes we face, things like pension, health insurance, utilities required, other required contracts? Some of our biggest contracts, of course, are with the city, but that being transportation and maintenance. Other school needs, you all are very well aware that the superintendent and school board are responsible by the Code of Virginia for adopting a needs-based budget. So that can include things that, other than nondiscretionary items. And then what cost reductions can we bring to bear from our operations? And so our upcoming operating budget discussions, as fun as they always are, are going to just have a whole, whole new dimension to them moving forward over the next several years. I will say, you should know that this plan for the ARPA money is that revisions and amendments will be necessary and are certainly expected over the next several years. This is our starting position based on what we know now for these funds. I will tell you that the Excel template that came out for our application has nine or 10 slots right on the front for amendments and revisions where you, where it's already planning for, for school divisions to submit multiple amendments and revisions for the planned use of these funds. But right now, based on what we prioritize coming out of the FY22 budget, knowing what our transportation needs are, all we can really do, not knowing the answers to how all those other things will move, is say, okay, if what, if all we do is maintain what we have now, not knowing these other variables, this is what it looks like over the next three years. And that's what the application is based on, subject to amendment. And information regarding the planned uses of these funds is available at the return to learn page. And there's also, Beth Chuck always does a wonderful job providing the translations and also multiple ways that folks can reach out to us if they want to provide comment or input on the use of these funds going forward. So that is an overview of where we are with, with ARPA and how the application will be submitted for what I call our starting position on our plan to, to use these funds. Lots of things will be unfolding over the next one to two, three years. It would be a good thing if we could shift more of these dollars into addressing one-time expenditures like if not reconfiguration, that's, that, that's challenging with timelines and so forth. But things like bus purchases and things like that, if we could get agreement with the city that will do more to cover those types of expenses and maybe knock off some other things on the CIP. If they could set aside more dollars to help us with operating over the next several years, maybe those kinds of trade-offs would, would help them, help us, help them, help us type of thing. And those are all discussions that, that are in our future.
Um, thank you, Ms. Powell. I am, I am not, this is a big deal because ARPA requires public comment, requires it to be on the agenda, requires approval from us. And it's very late, but I feel pretty strongly that we should not be putting these expenses that go to our general operating fund that we know is going to be a cliff at some point for city council. And they've already told us. We're very well aware of how city council does not want to support us in our current general operating fund. So I just am like, so I feel like it's really important that we have all of the people in our buildings that we, you know, we need all of these people in our buildings. We're going to continue to need them all in our building. I need our city to support our students in the way in the, in these buildings with this general operating fund. And I would much rather spend this $10 million or $5 million or $1.25 million on modernization efforts in our building, on making our buildings more energy efficient, things like this, you know, that will have cost savings in the long run. And so I know this is, I just feel like this, I, we have to continue to work at this. Um, but we know, they have told us, they're not going to be okay with this. They're going to keep saying, we're going to have a cliff, you guys, you guys already are going to have to go into your general operating fund and make cuts because we're going to make this huge investment in your middle school, which is, you know, so this is where we have some padding. I, I just feel like our community needs to tell their city council to support all of these people in the building, all these grownups in the building to support our students because we are all traumatized after 17 months of pandemic. And the many, many reasons that we're all traumatized and our learners are traumatized and we, and I, and our buildings need to be improved. I know that this is a hard ask. We, we are doing so many things in our building. From social services to learning to college admissions, all of pre-K, all of these things. It's not just simple K through 12, you know, it's just so much. And our buildings are not well-maintained, especially at Walker and Beaufort. So I just feel like this is concerning to me that we're, I would like us to not use ARPA funds to support ongoing positions that we want to and need for our students. I would like to be able to defend that every year to our city councils and we need these big positions. Instead of them saying, oh, well, we're going to have a cliff, so we can't use that and, and just use this money for our one-time expenses, like our modernization efforts at elementary. Having said that, I know this is late. I know it's a lot of work that's going into it. I just feel like that's a discussion we need to have at the board at some point.
I appreciate that. And that's why in the summary and key points, that the goal, I really, we need to keep our eye on that goal. We have to start somewhere. We have to meet the deadline to, to get the ARPA application in, in a timely manner. But there's a reason that there are all those amendment slots on the front of that application. We're expect, they are expecting it. I think we certainly expect and hope that, that our plans will change as we get more clarity on the future and these other variables. I think also early on, as we started talking about cares one, cares two, and now cares three funds, we discussed publicly wanting to use these funds as a ramp to help the city navigate their uncertainties to the point where hopefully things align in a way where we are putting one-time money into one-time expenses or non-recurring expenses, I should call it. And so I think that initial concept that we talked about as using these funds as a ramp, I think it still applies. I just don't think we're far enough along, perhaps. We're not quite there. I hope we get there sooner than later with clarity around state funding and, and the, the city's revenue outlook to know for sure how much the slope and distance of that ramp is what's required there. I just, we don't know.
Yeah. Any other comments? I mean, quickly, I do know, you know, the, the city manager and city council have had their, their first budget work session. You know, and, and they're laying the groundwork instead, setting the stage for how they want to look at this current budget. And then rolling that into their next two or three-year plan. But there is a need, and I know it was discussed by the mayor, you know, to meet with, with the school board sooner rather than later. And, and I did, you know, respond to her and say, yes, we do need to do that. We would like to do that because there, there's a lot of discussion, as Ms. McKeever said, about, you know, potential cuts or recalibrating our operating budget. And so, you know, we do have concerns and we need, again, I want to get on this now and, and not wait till October, November, when we start looking at this. So anyway, thank you. Any other comments?
We do need action so that we can submit the initial ARPA application. Okay. So I
Okay, so I move that we approve the ARPA application.
ARPA, that's why I have a plan for use of ARPA funds, yes.
And then, so any further discussion? I mean, I would like to just note Ms. McKeever's concerns and that we do, you know, circle back and can look at this and look at how we can.
I think we have to. I think this is initial plan, it's a starting position.
I mean, and I would like us, I mean, I, you know, we have so much that we're trying to figure in, and we've got the start of school going on and our superintendent search and all of these really, really important things going on. But again, even like I'm going to say this, and I don't know how we would make it happen, but an earlier work session around budget, you know, to really look at this, even with just the school board, if we can't coordinate it with city council, you know, right out of the gate here. I mean, I have concerns, so. Anyway, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so one extension. All right, thank you. All right, we are moving now to our second opportunity for comments from members of the community, if we have anybody hanging in there with us. Again, if you would like to make a comment, please keep it to three minutes, list your name and address. And seeing as we have our friendly reporter in the auditorium here, at the media center, but if we have anybody online, Mr. Kamau.
At this point, there are no people with their hands raised, but I will make an offer to extend an invite. If anyone would like to make a public comment through Zoom, through our interface here, just please raise your hand or go ahead and put, put it in the chat that you'd like to speak at this time.
Going once, going twice? Anybody? All right. You can always reach out to us via email if you have any concerns or comments or questions. Next, we are going to move into any board member comments. Anybody?
You know, one comment that I, that I have is I'm excited that we will be starting school in a few weeks. Looking forward to the children standing at the bus stops and coming into the buildings. Really excited about that. And thank all the staff members for all the great work on all the reports and updates and that. I'm excited about it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Curry, you with us down there? All right. Okay.
I would like to say a special thank you to all of the persons in our divisions that have been on the front line. There are a lot of people that did a lot of work as it relates to mitigation, setting up filtration systems, making sure that we have the necessary materials to keep our buildings safe. And we often remember our students. We also often thank our parents and our instructors. But there are a lot of people that you may not see day to day that keep our schools running. They ensure that they are safe, they ensure that they are clean. And when our schools open later this month, all of those mitigation items will be there. All of the mitigation strategies will be in place, and people will know exactly what to do. I understand why people are fearful of going back into the building. But until we go back, we don't know, all of the time and energy that we have spent is working. Now's the time for us to figure out, oh, this is working, oh, no, this isn't. And we have time to make those adjustments. When Dr. Odie was talking about return to learn, I don't know how many of you have been in the school system since I've been in the school division, but I've worked with the Charlottesville City School Division since 1980. And I have to say that during those years, whatever a situation has arisen, the division has done the best that they could to do the heavy lifting to protect everyone. Whether you were custodial staff, support staff, administrative staff, students, teachers, cafeteria employees. They always figure out a way. And Dr. Odie and Mr. Henderson alluded to that tonight, that they are going to be working with parents, families, and students to help them do what they need to do. We have always accepted our students where they were on day one. And we can't talk about would've, should've, could've. Pandemic is here, and we are dealing with it as best we know how. And we ask for your patience as we attempt to provide guidance and instruction to your children.
Thank you, Ms. Curry. Any other comments? All right, thank you, everybody, for all your work and everything that you presented tonight. Mr. Henderson, your updates.
Well, update, it's late. But I do want to remind our, our community that school begins Wednesday, August 25th. It'll be here before you know it. Our schools will be open and ready to welcome all our learners from ages three through 18 possibly. And we're looking forward to it. We're looking forward to having them back into the building and getting off to a good start, to a great year. So again, Wednesday, August 25th is the first day of school.
Thank you, sir. Work session wrap up, Dr. Baptist.
Two very quick items. One, I want feedback of the status of the new safety positions as school opens, what's going there? And then coming back around to ARPA.
Thank you. And I just would like to make note that our next meeting will be September 2nd. As of right now, we'll be here in the media center at 5:00 PM. And I believe that's it, and thank you so much, everybody. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.